Okay. Welcome everyone to this 2020-21 Annual Plan Meeting. It's good to get here. I declare the meeting open and invite everyone to stand and to say the karakia. Bakataka te ho ke te uru. Bakataka te ho ke te tonga. Kea ma kena kena ke uta. Kea ma taro taro ki tai. Ehi aki ana, azakuru. Hea ti au, hea huka, hea hau. Tē hei Maori ora. Who are in the gallery. The meeting is being livestreamed and I believe we have two of our members coming in by Zoom. So that will be Councillor Conde and Councillor Matthews. Please can you let myself or Democracy Services know if you need to leave the meeting? And we'll have adjournments for morning tea at 10.30 and if we're still going for lunch at 12.30. I am hoping that since I know there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of work done behind the scenes, that we might actually be able to get through our meeting in a reasonably timely manner. Are there any apologies? Yes, so. Excuse me, order. So there don't seem to be any apologies, so we'll move on to conflict of interest declarations. Do we have any of those? No, we don't seem to be having any of those, none from our other participants on Zoom, so. I now move to the confirmation of the minutes. And I move the motion that the council approves the minutes of the Annual Plan Long-Term Plan Committee meeting held on 17th of June. They've been circulated and that they'd be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of that meeting. Do I have a second there? Thank you, Councillor Day. I'll now put that motion which has been moved and seconded and if we could all vote in the normal way. Do you want to raise? I take it you're voting for it though, so, yep. And Rebecca, is she with us? Aye, thank you Rebecca. And Jenny? Jenny, are you with us? Thank you. So they have been, that's been moved unanimously. There are no items not on the agenda. But I would just like to acknowledge that Rebecca, we do acknowledge your loss and thank you for being with us despite that today. And our thoughts, I know I'm not speaking just for myself, our thoughts and prayers have very much been with you over this time. We look forward to the time when you're back with us in person. So there are no requests for public participation. We did have one from Mr Gibson. We did say that he was able to come and speak to us, but in the event, he actually decided he didn't need to. So we'll move on to our general business. Now, the mayor will be introducing this paper. I'm planning to second it, but because there has been quite a lot of, there's a lot of information A in the paper and there have also been some amendments which you should have copies of. I thought it was really necessary that we allowed some time for officer advice. So we're going to do that prior to the mayor then introducing the paper. So I invite people that have got any questions of officers to raise their hands and we'll take a speaking order. I have Councillor Pannett and Councillor Young, Councillor Calvert.
Actually, I've got a process question, Madam Chair. Look, I just think we need to be careful about involving officers in political debate. Like we've had now quite a lot of discussion, a lot of these are, you know, political. So I just, I think we just need to be very careful about the boundaries here. So I think it's fine to ask questions, but I don't think we should be saying, you know, do you agree or do you not agree with whatever, whatever it is, X, Y or Z. I think this is getting a bit problematic. It's sort of increasingly coming in and I don't think it's quite appropriate. And even to be sitting at the table at this point, probably, we just need to maintain the distinction.
It's up to all of us how we frame our questions. Your point's noted and that's why we're doing it prior to the debate. And that's why we've circulated the amendments so that people are clear what those amendments are likely to be so that we can have robust questions. Okay.
I take your point, Councillor, but obviously we also want officers' professional advice to help guide us through these things. It's up to us to make the decision as to how we respond to that advice, whether we agree with it or not. And that's always the way of it. So I certainly appreciate the advice and I will be asking for questions as I know some others will be on some bits. Because when there are amendments, of course, those aren't officer advice and it is appropriate for us to ask for officers for their thoughts on that advice and then for us to determine what to do with that advice.
So next on the speaking order is Councillor Young.
So it's just really a question. With the documentation, I know there's been a lot of bouncing around about the rates level, but sometimes in the papers it refers to 5.1 and sometimes it refers to 5.2. Where exactly are we at at the moment?
Honestly, 5.1% was the amount that was consulted on. If you take all the information that's currently incorporated in the document as you see it, the underlying rate increase is 5.2%.
So as that's an average, what would that mean to a residential rate payer?
I think that's incorporated in the document itself, Councillor.
Loss somewhere.
I'll find it and remind yourself.
But yeah, I think I did see it. Yeah, I think, okay. It was really the percentage, it's just that, I mean, there was people saying that 5.1 really equated to 6.4.
So residential, on the basis of the figures that we had to date, as is in the paper, it's 5.6% residential and 4.3% for commercial.
I did see it, but it was about three o'clock this morning.
Certainly.
Thank you for that. We now have a question from Councillor Calvert.
Yeah, just sort of on that, so just the percentage of growth which basically means that the residential rates will be at 5.6%. How confident are you on that percentage growth over the next rating year or after this?
That's growth that's already happened.
It's already happened.
Yep, so we're confident of those growth figures.
So that's pretty good. And can you just, you've got the value of residential properties and the value of commercial properties. What is the approximate number of residential properties and commercial ratable properties? Is it, my last recollection is about 73 residential, six commercial, is that right? Oh, just the actual number of ratable properties in the commercial and residential space? Roughly.
The number of properties is roughly 5,000 versus 1,000, that's very rough.
Okay, so, okay, all right, no, that's fine. And I know we went out to consult on the document and one of the, I wonder whether you could just clarify how much, if you take into account our income overall, how much are we roughly spending on water in some way? Are they purchasing water or the infrastructure? Is it still about a third? Is that?
Yeah, just under a third. I haven't got the exact number, I'll have to calculate it.
Okay. And in the paper, you also referred that we've had to pay more for our water from Greater Wellington Regional Council. What's the rationale behind that increase? Is it just something that they put up themselves to help? Or are we getting more service, getting more water?
No, it's usually an inflationary increase. Usually they've been signalling that it's going to be increased costs to pay down debt in advance of increasing the size of the retention rates for collection of the water and treatment of the water. So it's just the costs associated with providing that bulk water.
Okay, so we're confident that any extra costs that we're paying for the water is going back, is justified against water, not any other services by that council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Calvert. Just a little bit of a reminder that we have had workshops on these matters. There still may be questions, I guess, but the very new stuff is really the amendments. But anyway, it's up to people what they want to ask.
So it was in the document, it was in the document about the increase?
Yeah, fair enough. So the mayor.
Yeah, I have two questions. The first one of them was, in the budget document, there's a comment made about the increase in CapEx this year which I didn't see reflected in the OpEx number for the library. So if we put the $2 million in, it doesn't appear in the, in 15 to have any reflection there. I just wondered if that was intended or whether it's somewhere else or if I just missed it. It's on page 15, so. Take the table on 15, I should say, under cost pressures.
Through you, Madam Chair. So you'll see that the table itself incorporates the operating impacts, but it is, the point you're making is incorporate in Para 50 where we talk about the capital expenditure items. Paragraph 50 on page 19 of your papers, Mr Mayor.
So that's, so you've got essentially $100 million of carry forward expected and the $2 million is sort of in the wash up of that in effect.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Right. Okay, thank you. And the second question, I'm going to the amendment which has been proposed on the playground by Councillor Day. Just wanted to understand, my reading of that is if we go out to tender, if this was passed, we go out to tender and whatever the price is. And the last time we tendered was 5. something from memory. Our QS was 3. something. Can you, is your reading of that, that if the price comes in or whatever it comes in at, that's the price we'll pay? And the second question is, can you tell us what the proportion, if you know, what the proportion of the cost is this landscaping as opposed to the playground itself? And the third question is just the delivery timeframe. Now, those are probably very difficult to answer in the sense that the amendments come quite late in the piece. I know that there's been discussion going on about it, but I just want to understand what it is, what the meaning of the motion will be from an officer point of view.
Madam Chair, perhaps I can respond to that. So what this amendment's asking for is that we take the existing design or a relatively similar one, one that can meet the requirements of the existing resource consent and take it back to the market. And we will then understand what the likely price of that project will be. And it enables us to carry forward the existing budget of $2.1 million into this annual plan. But also, and this has been on the basis of my advice, that if we require a higher budget than $2.1 million, which it appeared we did when we last tendered it, that we could manage that through a reprioritisation of our planned capital expenditure in the annual plan year rather than seek additional budget. Obviously, none of us know what that final price will be. And if you wish, we could always report that back to the council before a contract was let. In terms of timeframe, I think we just need to sit down, I think, with the portfolio councillor and other interested stakeholders and understand whether we are going to reassess the design before we go back to the market or whether we just take the same design back to the market. If it's the latter, that will obviously be a quicker process and I see no reason why that should take very long at all.
I can speak to it during the debate too.
Okay, okay. And lastly, the proportion of that budget that is landscaping, I would have to ask, I think I saw Paul Andrews come into the room, whether Paul can answer that question off the top of his head, I'm not sure. Paul, if you could go to the microphone to answer that?
Through you, Madam Chair. I've actually just managed to print the QS that was done for the park and I'm just trying to understand it. But I think, to be fair, a significant portion of the actual project go into landscaping and moving trees around on the site. I think another significant cost was the relocation of the lighthouse and refurbishment of the lighthouse, which was, does have a figure of $350,000 on it. So yeah, I think in conversation with Phil Beaker this morning, we thought the split between landscaping and play equipment was somewhere between 60, 40 and 70, 30 in favour of the landscaping being the highest percentage of the cost. So I think what you need to understand is that the playground design and consenting for the playground was part of it overall. Park redevelopment, which included the Chinese garden, two new lawn areas. I suppose what we've learnt since that time is some of the other resilience issues on the park. So the high level QS for the whole park, based on the information we had before and new information now puts the overall park redevelopment at more than $30 million. So I just think that's the context you need to consider things in.
So can I just ask, just a follow up question? So Paul, the extent to which the, because it was part of an overall park and I know it's on the edge of the park, yeah, does it cause us any impact on the park in terms of the design of the park? It's something I presume it just touches the edge of it effectively.
It is on one end of the park, you're correct. In terms of staging and construction, I don't have the answers to those questions at the moment. And I think that's what a little bit of further work would, I suppose, flesh out. How practical was it to stage the park development? I think in discussions last year, there's a large lawn that adjoins the playground. So I think the view was if we were to do this in a staged way, then we would do the children's playground and the lawn. And I think that's particularly relevant in terms of the change in levels, the movement of trees and those sorts of things. So I don't have the answer to that question, how it could practically be staged from a construction point of view. So I think there needs to be a bit further advice on that.
So sorry, just to be clear, and the lawn, because the lawn as proposed takes up a good chunk of, about at least half of the park.
That takes you right to the border of the Chinese garden, doesn't it?
No, no, no.
Well, that's what Paul's, that's what Paul's answering, that's why I'm asking the question.
So going south from the playground, the lawn adjoins the playground and then moves towards the Chinese garden. So again, I don't know the answer to the question exactly, but it would seem if we're doing significant earthworks, changing levels and moving trees around for the proposed playground, we need to just look at how that can be staged in a practical way.
And the final thing is just in terms of the consent. So consent's been granted for the whole redevelopment.
Correct.
In terms of the playground, how flexible is that consent able to be? Because if you did less in terms of the impacts of the development.
I'm making an assumption that most of the contention was around the Chinese garden for that redevelopment.
That's my assumption too, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yes, I find it very odd if people were fighting against the playground.
Okay, moving on, we have Councillor Day.
It's a mic, yes, thanks. Sorry. My question was page 2.1 and actually kind of also page 16, just where we talk about our assumptions around impacts on revenue. And that we're sort of already starting to see that that isn't coming true and just how that impacts on us in an ongoing way. Obviously, you've reported that, sorry, I'll just go back to the page. You know, things have got back to normal quite quickly. So do you think that's going to have an overall impact on our revenue? That could be different to what's being said in this paper?
Yeah, it may to some extent, but recognising that the assumptions that we've made in the document, and this was key to the original assumptions we made in the draft and in the consultation document, is that the revenue losses that we have currently forecasted are being debt funded. So if the revenue losses are less, it doesn't give you any more rates funded money to go and spend on anything else. So that's pretty fundamental. So yep, there's still some uncertainty around those numbers and we'll be in a position to update you on those quarterly as we move through the year.
Thanks for that. Moving on, we have Councillor Pannett and then Councillor Rush. Oh, and Councillor Fitzsimons and Councillor Foo. Councillor Pannett.
Sorry, not on the amendments, but a very high level issue which is around the insurance. I am concerned that we have a quake now that we're going to bridge the gap through borrowing. Is that really realistic? Because I obviously would get money from insurance from the government, but really is that realistic?
In terms of, in terms of council's overall balance sheet and debt capacity, is it realistic? Yes, it is. We have the capacity to be able to borrow that. Does it put severe pressure on our current debt caps that are contained in our current financial strategy? Yes, it does, but those are self-imposed caps by you as a council. You'll still be significantly under the debt caps imposed by the LGFA in terms of our borrowing covenants in that situation. I think the other thing to keep in mind is that in the case of the insurance, it's a capacity issue rather than a policy or a decision issue by you as a council. So when we can't procure any more insurance, that's the situation that we're faced with in a major event. It's going to be either debt funding by council or potentially further contributions from central government to manage those issues in a more severe event.
This is supplementary though. Obviously, we're trying to be looking at some of those debt levels to pay for Let's Get Willie Moving, for Civic Square, et cetera, et cetera. So again, is it realistic given that burden?
So that's something that we'll have to have a look at as part of the LTP. So in conjunction with the LTP, there'll also be an opportunity to review the insurable risk strategy and what those debt caps will be as part of the LTP and thinking about how you may or may not be able to create the capacity required for insurable risk as part of that LTP debt cap. But it's a reality of the situation we face about the ability to be able to gain insurance cover in the current environment.
Right, Councillor Rush, thank you for that. Oh, you're okay, okay, Councillor Rush.
Just really following on from the mayor's questions to Paul earlier, which, I'm not sure if he's gone.
Still here.
So I was going to just ask you about a bit of uncertainty and some more review was mentioned. And I just wonder, we went through the Omorel Reservoir project and agreed to approve it. And the procurement strategy there actually went to the contracting community to flesh out their ideas around how to solve some of these issues. And it seems to me that that might be an opportunity to best both get the project going and also to get the best answers from those that know. And I just wondered if that might be a strategy we could adopt.
Through you, Madam Chair. When we tendered the project last time, there was only one tenderer. I suppose when we go to the market again, it'll be a different environment. I don't know how much different that is. I think it's the sort of project that probably has a different sort of market in terms of who will tender it on it. And there's quite probably a number of kind of subcontracts to that contract. So yes, certainly the approach to procurement can be reviewed. I think the other part of it is probably based on the existing design. As we've discussed this morning, that's quite a high part of the project involves moving trees and moving structures around. So you either run with the design you've got or you go back to the drawing board and look at some options from a value engineering perspective. So there's a couple of scenarios there you could rethink the design a little bit and still get the same elements at play, but maybe not so much spent on landscaping and moving trees around, et cetera. So there's a couple of scenarios there that could be considered.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just want to maybe just supplement that. I mean, at this point though, all we are doing is suggesting we go out and relook at it and re-tender it and it may well come back with a number that's simply inappropriate and as consequence, we won't go forward with the project. That's kind of what we're doing today, am I right? Certainly not sanctioning a project at the moment.
My understanding is you're confirming the carry forward from this financial year to next.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what other recommendations you've been wanting.
Can I just say, in terms of my understanding of this amendment is that we are giving the officers approval to proceed with a project by tendering it. And Councillor Jill Day may wish to clarify, is your amendment?
Yeah, yeah, this is a bit awkward because we're sort of starting to talk about my amendment, it's getting really.
We might be getting into the debate.
We haven't entered it yet.
Yeah.
I might change my mind, but I was just going to say, and this is a question.
But it's meant to be questions, good.
This is a question, this project currently actually sits under two teams, which the reason that I'm asking this question is that when we talk about the landscaping part of the project, it is actually quite significant because of its position on Frack Kitz Park. And so I'm just wondering if we do have Build Wellington here or not because, and we may not. But it's just that the reality is we're not just putting a playground in a park in a community that has a different park like feel. This is an urban environment where we actually do really have to be sympathetic to the urban, the community that lives there and make sure that we do it well. And so I guess that's just where Build Wellington might have a perspective. I think that the design brief was probably quite strict on the things. I know that the waterfront design process is quite involved. So I'm just wondering.
I don't know how we can get you the information unfortunately.
I'm sure Moana can speak to the Build Wellington perspective.
Maybe it's just confirming that the Build Wellington, there are some strict rules around what you can do on the waterfront.
Yeah, so we've gone through quite a detailed design process. We can certainly come back and look at. So a little while ago, I think at the end of last year, we were starting to look at whether we could phase and do the playground in sections. We can go back and look at that. Yes, there is landscaping that's required there and Paul and Phil will continue to work together on that. But I think we just need to go away and have a bit of a look. We could go back out to tender, it could come in cheaper, it could come in more expensive. We just, we just don't know what the market is out there, noting that the parliamentary slide has gotten a lot more expensive in the meantime as well. Look, we're happy to go and look at it, but yes, you are correct that there was quite a detailed design brief.
I'm going to put myself into the list at this point because I've got a question on the same thing. A question of officers, is it imagined that this amendment as it stands would still have a cap of around any particular figure? Because it doesn't actually say that and it just talks about an additional budget.
That was based on officer advice. It may be that following this discussion, it may be worth putting an amount in which I originally had because we've just talked about it.
With all due respect, Councillor Day, thank you for that. But I do want to hear also what officers have to say about that and whether that's a significant problem. Because at the moment, it basically says the sky's the limit. We just go and get a design and we'll find some CapEx from somewhere to deliver it. So I guess, I don't know who I'm asking. So I guess, I don't know who I'm asking.
So let me assist. So the advice was on the basis that we are best not to put a figure into the market that, in other words, I don't wish to lead the market to, yes. So what we want is the best price possible. And I think, though it doesn't specifically say so here, we will be sensible about this. And clearly, if the resulting cost is going to raise eyebrows, we would discuss that with our portfolio councillors and bring advice to you. But this amendment does allow us to reprioritize. So we're not asking for additional funds in this budget. It is about reprioritizing the existing capital expenditure program. And if that were a, that is something that the executive leadership team does have delegated authority to do to a certain level. But if it were beyond what we thought was appropriate or politically challenging, we would bring it back to you.
Thank you. That's very, a good answer for me, anyway. We're moving on to councillor Foo. Councillor Fitzsimons has indicated she no longer wishes to ask her questions. So councillor Foo.
Great, thank you. I have a couple of questions, just one around the 3B appearance bylaw. Just in terms of resources from what council has at the moment, is this a new program of work? Will it need more resources? And in the light that we are looking to not increase or, you know, renew resources, I'm using resources instead of people, I guess, how does that impact if we go ahead with this piece of work? Kia ora, Bas, thank you.
Morning councillors. So the resources are for the implementation of the bylaw. So that is in terms of putting the bylaw in place, the regulations, staff, overheads, and so on and so forth. So there is work that can be transacted in terms of the development of the bylaw using existing resourcing from policy.
Thank you.
So you can go out and consult on a draft bylaw, but when it comes time to implementation, that's where the costs lie. So that's where the $230,000 lies.
Okay, thank you, Bas. That's great, thank you. I think I've got councillor Young, and that's my pitch.
So it's just a question about the playground. Bearing in mind, last time we went out, we got one tender. And knowing that this is a very flaky kind of construction market, what happens if we get no tenders? I wouldn't recommend that.
Let's have some officer advice.
Look, I'm sure we'll get someone tendering on the project. I think most contractors like to work for council. They know they'll get paid. And it is a, you know, any project on the waterfront is of significant public interest. So as I said, it's a little bit, it involves a number of different sub-trades. So it's not your normal construction type project. And I think that's probably why there's not a wider market interest in it. If you were looking at the whole park, it would be a totally different kettle of fish. There will be significant interest from a construction point of view. But yeah, the playground's a little bit more bespoke, a bit more unique, hence the challenge. So I think we can maybe think about how we could project manage it and whether we kind of maybe are more involved in terms of the sub-trades that might participate in construction of the project. So probably some advice from the Bill Wellington team and our procurement team on the best way to approach that process, again, based on what we learnt last time.
Thank you. Councillor Young, councillor Calvert. Oh, sorry, councillor Young, you've had yours, councillor Calvert.
Just a question about the bylaw, the appearance bylaw. Have we got policy around that currently? No, but have we got policy around appearance premises?
Well, it depends what you call policy.
No, but I'm asking officers, have we got formal policy around appearance facilities?
In terms of the appearance bylaw, in terms of the issue that Ministry of Health has identified and that we've reported back to you, in which an amendment was moved and asked us to develop a bylaw, no, there is currently no work in that space.
But we've got no actual policy about, because often we form policies and then we have bylaws to help enforce those policies. So I'm just understanding, do we have a policy around these type of premises? Any policy?
I have to get back to you. There might be something related to it, but there certainly isn't a bylaw in relation to appearance.
I know there's no bylaw, I just want to know.
So we have general public health powers, but we would have to be informed of it and told about it. And one of the big issues with this sector is that we don't know where a lot of them are. So a big chunk of the work and the waste in the appearance bylaw is going to be having to actually try and find out where all these businesses are. So for some places like tattoo parlors, that's going to be easier than for others, but people work out of their homes. So we really don't even know kind of the ecosystem that we're working in. So we do currently already, for example, regulate hairdressers, so it's not the entire appearance industry, but there are a big chunk of it, like nail salons, tattoo parlors, et cetera, where we don't regulate. But we do have general public health powers if someone raised concerns.
Yeah. But I'm not asking for the rules. I'm not asking for the, I'm asking about whether we generally have any policy around these type of businesses or, yeah.
From a public health perspective, no.
No. Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't know we were asking questions about the amendments, which is why I've got a last one. On amendment 3.1, it says money tagged for home energy audits to the social pool. Can officers tell me what the social pool is and how much is in there?
Sorry, I'm not putting the amendment up, so it doesn't need to.
Oh.
What other ones have you got then? Okay, no, this is, no, this is, hang on. Are there any more questions? No, I think we've done with questions. So that being the case, I'd like to thank the officers for answering the questions. And we'll move on to our general, to our first and only item, I believe, which is the annual plan, recommended adoption to council. And Mayor Foster is going to introduce that, and I'm going to second it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce this. There are quite a few things to talk about, and I'm going to try and keep it at a high level. First of all, I wanted to thank all the people who made submissions. I think even despite the situation that we were in, we got a pretty good number of submitters, and in fact, more than in some past years. So I think that's quite impressive. And I was also really pleased with the turnout that we got with the webinars. So we tried some new tools, did some new things, and they are tools that hopefully we will be able to use, or hopefully, I'm sure we will be able to use in upcoming engagements. And I know that, for example, in the planning for growth, we're going to be doing that. I wanted to thank our submitters too for the, what I think was the admirable level of restraint that was shown. Most budgets, and I've seen a few, are usually a lineup of people saying, can we have more money for their particular projects? We didn't see much of that this time. It was pretty modest, and I thought that was a reflection of the circumstances which we are in. So I thank people for that. But I particularly want to thank you, Barbara, and your whole team for the immense amount of work that you've put in, not only in pivoting the budget. So we started off with a budget and then had to essentially redo components of it, running this process alongside everything else that needed to be done through the whole level four, level three, level two situation, and then preparing the papers that are before us today. And also for the hard work that went into actually getting the numbers right, because we've been, the numbers have gone up and down quite a bit, and there's a lot of hard work in that. And I will make some comments about that as I go through. So look, as I said, I want people to focus on the big picture, which is the overall budget. This is a very different budget, and it's clearly a, very much a COVID budget. It's not the sort of circumstances which we would normally be in. We expect to lose up to $70 million in lost revenue between 2019-20, the year which we are just finishing, and 2020-21. That's very significant. That's lost revenue and increases in fees and charges, which we were previously planning on putting into the budget, which we haven't put in. Most of those are in the building consents area and in parking charges. So it's at $70 million. We also know, so we are in a worse financial position. We also know that our community is in a worse financial position. Some people will have been very little affected by COVID. Other people will have had their incomes completely destroyed. And so we know that our community overall has less capacity to be able to afford the things that we choose to spend their money on. So we've got to be careful. We're deliberately taking on debt for operating deficit, that $70 million we are deliberately taking to debt, and that will flow through into following years. And I'll come back to that as well shortly. That's unusual, we don't normally do that, but it's a reasonable thing to do because we couldn't just put that on our community at this stage. And we also are expecting those revenues to recover. So we're not just going out and saying, look, we're planning on some new programs and projects, and we're going to debt fund those, even if they're operating. We are debt funding only the things which are relating to essentially the lost revenues because of COVID. Around the country, we've seen a lot of councils, and you know, I'm sure we've all been reading of councils who've been relooking at their budgets, and by and large, they've been reducing the amount that they are planning to charge their communities. We've kind of done that as well. We started off at, if you go right back to February, March, we started off with a possibility of 15.5%. That's where we started. We were never going to go out with that. Our LTP, the 2018-2028 LTP, says 7.1 for this year. But what we went out, what we were about to go out with before COVID was 9.2 or 7.9 as providing options. As soon as COVID came along, officers redid the budget. The biggest change there was that we effectively deferred the immediate repayment of some things which you could effectively capitalize. And they came to us with, I think it was 4.9. We, so they worked very hard to do that. We worked very hard to increase it, and we went out with 5.1. And that's what we consulted on. Then during the period that we've been through, we've obviously had one increase, which takes it to 5.2, which is the beauty bylaw. What we haven't done is we haven't cut any services. But what we do see in the papers which are in front of us is some significant ups and downs in, and I think they, if people think, oh, we went out with 5.1 and we end up with 5.1, you haven't changed anything. Well, I would encourage people to look at the paper. In fact, I think they need to look at the paper and to see the increases, and I will talk through a few of those. The increases in costs for council and then the reductions in costs for council, because they all are, or many of them are really quite significant. So those, I particularly probably want to focus on two areas in the increases. One of them is in the insurance area, and I think councillor Panett, you asked some questions there. The reality is that insurance has got a lot more expensive. I think most of us as homeowners or business owners will know that as well. And that affects council too. We are buying less insurance for, essentially for more money. And the other difficulty is actually getting the insurance. So what we've been told is that actually accessing insurance is becoming really, really expensive. So we can choose whether to buy very, very expensive insurance or not. And if we start buying very expensive insurance, you can bet your bottom dollar that next year probably that will flow through to the prices we have to pay as well. So we are choosing in this budget to take on more risks. So if there's a major event, we are going to have a greater amount which we will have to debt fund in terms of the recovery. But I don't think there's any way around that because the insurance bill, were we not to do that, would be astronomical. And you've also got to think about how frequent an event is, and obviously, that's another crystal ball, we don't know when there's going to be a major event. But when you start paying, you know, having to pay that off over, say, you know, 30 years or so for one in a thousand event, you're kind of thinking you're paying a lot. So we are taking on more risk. And this, there was already more risk built into the budget before we even started, so this is more risk on top of more risk. So bear that in mind. The second one there is that we already had put into the budget increased depreciation for the three waters. And between going out with the draft and now, that number has gone up. So the amount that we're, effectively what that is saying, that the amount that we're expecting to spend on our three waters, certainly the amount we're depreciating the three waters has gone up, and you'd expect that that will flow through into spending more money on our three waters. Isn't that something that our community has said that they want us to do? The third one in those big increases is obviously relates to our CCOs. And, you know, it's not rocket science to work out that many of our CCOs have no longer got the revenue streams that they were expecting to have. And that, this is about us providing some comfort to them. Issue. In terms of the savings targets, there are a couple that I also wanted to mention. The interest expense adjustments, now that's only $400,000, and that's because interest rates are relatively low. But what that reflects is that we are expecting and we are budgeting for $100 million worth of capital that we've got in our budget not to be spent in this year. $100 million. So that is our assumption. We usually underspend on our CapEx, but we are now putting that into our budget and assuming that we're not going to spend that much. And that obviously relates to how much we spend in terms of Barbara's capacity to reprioritize in terms of amendments that might come later on. The second one I wanted to mention was in the remuneration increases and the staff delivery and reprioritization. And effectively what this means is that the organization is being squeezed. We often get people encouraging us to be more efficient. Those are directly about the efficiencies, and in fact, so too is the consultancy budget above it. Those are directly about the efficiencies within the organization. And that may sometimes mean that things are more difficult to get done. Barbara's nodding. Okay, so it just means, it also means that we've got to think very hard about the extra pressures that we put on the organization when we say, oh, can you do a bit more work on this, or on this, or on this? We're going to have to get smart, and we're going to have to prioritize about the things that we need to do and maybe the things that we don't need to do. So these are the changes that have been proposed to help us deliver the projects and programs that we want to deliver. So every time we decide we want to spend more, bear in mind that we're already squeezing the organization, and that effectively puts more pressure on to do that, possibly to do that again. I think that our community expects us to be disciplined this time. We've got 5.2 at the moment. I know that there's an amendment which will be there to try and bring us back to 5.1, and I'm hoping that we'll support doing that. And I want to put it also in the context of next year. Now, next year, the number which is written into the paper is 9.7. But that will exclude a whole lot of other stuff. So next year in the LTP was 6.2. That, by next year, I mean 2021 too, so when we go into the LTP. And we will also start having to pay off the costs of that COVID borrowing. We will also start having to pay off the costs of all the trucking and the sludge treatment that was done. Between those, we're looking at something around $86 million. If you spread that over 10 years, which I think is the intention, that's roughly, that's $8.6 million a year, which wasn't previously in our budgets, going on top of the 6.8 start point. Then we're clearly also going to need to do things around Civic Square and the library, which also is not in our budget. We clearly also have expectations of spending on waters. We clearly also have expectations of spending on Let's Get Wellington Moving, and I'm sure there'll be some other things as well. So my point is, while the 5.1 is a reasonably high number, if we start getting too extravagant now, just wait till next year, because next year will be really tough, and our community probably will struggle with some of those things. And Barbara's also given us advice that some of the savings which are in there are not sustainable into the, into the, into following years. So my encouragement to you as we go through this is just to think very, very carefully about what we do decide to spend money on, to try and be disciplined, to keep some powder dry for next year, and to think about the things that are really important as opposed to the things that may be hard. For example, one thing that I know we've got coming up is the action plan on Tiatakura. There will be some things that I have no doubt will come through from that. Those are in the anything else list that I don't know about yet. So there's quite a lot of pressures on us. So anyway, it gives me pleasure to move the paper and to just encourage you to focus on the big picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Foster. So I'm actually reserving my right to speak to the substantive, so I'm inviting really people who've got amendments or who have other matters for debate to have their say. Do I have a, someone, do I have a speaking order? Okay, councillor Conde. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Kia ora, everyone. Just note to Rebecca, who's also following along at home, we've been emailed the handout that all the councils have in front of us with the amendments, which are referring to those. So I'll be referring to amendments 3A and 3B, which are on that handout, as the amendments that I will be moving. that I will be moving. And thank you, Mayor Foster. The intention of this amendment is to bring our rates increase down, that down to 5.1%, which is the amount that we consulted on with our community. As Mayor Foster has said, you know, we ended up at 5.2% because of a number of cost pressures that were outside of our control. And the organisation has done a great job to bring those, find some savings to bring that down, but I still think it's really important to try and deliver on the 5.1% that our communities have, you know, supported. Surprisingly, it's unusual to have a community actually support the higher rates increase. For me, you know, with my treasury background, budgeting is about drawing a line somewhere and then saying no to some things. That's just a part of the process, which is part of why Treasury gets known as the Department of No, because we draw the line and then we say no to things. So I'm, I'm very much wearing my Department of No hat at the moment in moving this amendment. But I would note that that doesn't mean that I don't think these projects are worthwhile. I support both of the projects that are on the list. I think they're both excellent, excellent projects, but at some point we have to draw the line and prioritise what's in and what's out. I want to particularly acknowledge the, quite a lot of work that's gone into the appearance bylaw, which I think staff have been working really hard on. And, and note that, you know, that work, as Baz said, during question time, there is some capacity for the pre-implementation work for that to continue, obviously a bit more slowly than we would have planned if we would have funded. And that it would require additional funding in order to implement the bylaw. And that's something that we can come back around to with the long-term plan when we're looking at our other priorities. I don't think I have anything more particularly to say at this point on that, so I'll just invite councillor Young, who said that she was going to second this amendment.
Councillor Young, do you want to speak?
Yes, I will, but I'll speak now and forever hold my peace.
Right, good on you.
So I support this amendment because it helps bring down some of the rates increases, which I am very concerned about. You know, the trouble with the two rates options that we have is really Hobson's Choice. And before you jump up and down about the fact I'm quoting Captain Hobson of the Treaty of Waitangi, I'm not. It's a play written in the Victorian Times about a man who worked in a livery. So don't worry about Hobson's Choice, it's okay. But what Hobson's Choice means, Hobson's Choice is really no choice at all. You know, I, I don't like the idea of borrowing for operational expenditure, just as I have even in my most frugal times not borrowed for my groceries. But, but I realise that this is what the majority of people who made submissions wanted. I just feel very strongly this is not the time for nice to haves. And whilst I totally applaud the idea of having greater safety around the appearance bylaw, God knows we will need it, some more than others. And no names. This is not the time, this is not the time, it can wait, it can wait for a couple of years. I am very aware that Wellington and Wellingtonians are very fragile peoples, businesses are going under, you just need to walk along the golden mile and you'll see a number, increasing number of shops closing. People have had big pay cuts, some people have lost their jobs. People who are on fixed incomes are getting very little, if they have money in the bank, they're getting almost no interest. If they're relying on the airports for dividends, good luck. And people are also worried about the security of their jobs. So this is a time when we have to really think about doing the best for Wellington. And I do believe that the officers and councillors have really tried to balance those. I may not agree with the final, you're not allowed to say that expression, answer. But, and I am, and I am very concerned about the rates increases looming in the next couple of years. I feel almost ill about them. But as my brother said to me, you know, no point in feeling ill, you can't actually do anything about it really, just one vote. So, but would you like a gin and tonic? I thought that was a very good solution. The thing is, you know, I think Wellington is the most livable city in New Zealand, but my real concern is to make sure that it remains an affordable city. There's no point in planning for growth if people can't afford to live here. So I'm very happy to support this amendment. And that's it from me for the time being.
I think we've got councillor Sparrow, I've seen councillor Panet stand up as well. Councillor Sparrow.
Just a few brief comments from me, reiterating what has already been said. It was only a short while ago that our chief financial officer said to us that 5.1% was the amount that was consulted on, and that was alongside the 2.3%. And as we know, a good number of people are reasonably comfortable with the 5.1%. And I hope that we, that's the amount that we agree on in the end and not 5.2%. I'm, I'm very concerned about last minute proposals that might result in a rates increase beyond the 5.2%, no matter how worthy they might be. I wouldn't be supporting even my own pet projects if they were thrown in at the last minute. So I think there's very much a principle at stake here and we do need to keep it at 5.1%.
Thank you, councillor Panet.
Well, I was just reflecting that as sure as the earth rotates around the sun, local government politicians will argue about $100,000 more than they will argue about the many millions of dollars which is required to keep cities and towns running. It's inevitable and I was kind of hoping we could avoid it this year. Let's just remember, we're talking about 0.1% difference before we have a six-hour debate. So I, I think consultation obviously is very important and I just, I'll talk to that later, but I would like to congratulate the officers for the excellent engagement report. But consultation does allow you to make changes. There's no thing about saying you must not do things. And I will also point out that actually the BIF was consulted on, so why has it been taken out? It has high support. And also the Karori Events Centre was not in there, but is, is going in, but which I am not going to vote against because I have said that I support it. I think that we do have a tendency to focus on very small things rather than, like questions like the insurance, which is really worrying, I'm going to talk to that later, I think that's, that's sort of the bigger issues. And I think with due respect to councillor Conde, who has a far better understanding than me of conventional economics, I think my point would be that conventional economics has not served us very well often and particularly on the side of environment and natural disasters. There has been strong support for Tuputoa. I want to thank my colleagues again for the work that we did, for your support around the table when we went, because most of those votes on Tuputoa, before we went out for consultation amongst you all, were over 10 out of the 15. And I really appreciate that. The community came back with strong support, 75% definite or somewhat support, only 13% opposing, which is their right of course. And I'm not clear why these two particular things have been singled out as opposed to all the other things which have been posited. But I'm not going to be voting against anything today, actually. And I, my preference is try, is trying to be collegial with my colleagues. If my colleagues say something's very important, then accept the tunnel. That's an open exception. I will try to be supportive. I would like to make the point that resilience is not an option. This earthquake money is absolutely critical. We are at high risk of having more earthquakes and devastating earthquakes. We have to pay for it, it is not free and we cannot rely on central government riding to the rescue on a white horse. They are already under massive pressure now because of COVID. And what I'm not hearing here in this debate is what is the cost of not taking action? Because we're talking about 0.1% of the rates, what I'm talking about is millions, if not billions of dollars worth of damage. And we have to engage with this. The owners, just remembering, are covering the great majority of costs when they do the earthquake strengthening work, it is not the council. I'll just remind you to the BIF money, you did want, you did want the cathedral to be strengthened and, you know, like I, I put this money in to make sure that we could cover that. I just want to speak in support of the appearance bylaw. I'm sure councillor Fitzsimons will do much better job than me, but this was an administrative error that this wasn't included. You know, it was just a mistake, which is fine, you know, these things happen. But I don't think that this area of work should be penalised because of that. And I will be supporting it again as per debate because of the impact on vulnerable workers. I will just finish by saying there is nothing sacred about 5.1. I don't know why we're not arguing over 4.98 or 5.6 or 10.3 or whatever. And, and, and the last point, and probably the most important one, is that this is why some of you were outraged over water. This is what happens. We spend all this time arguing over 100K instead of kind of going, are we as, you know, like a board of directors, making sure that we are covering our strategic risks and setting forth a good strategy for the next 100 years? Higher rates are a good thing. They are good. If you want to live in a city which is safe and resilient and thriving and equal, you have to pay. There is no alternative. And that is why we want to live here rather than some other parts of our wonderful country. So I will stand in strong support of those who can afford to pay, should pay, and obviously there are some things in this budget to help those who are going to struggle. If we are going to have a strong vibrant economy and good action climate change, let's bring out the wallet. Great, thank you for that very passionate debate councillor Panet. Councillor Paul.
Look, I have the best award colleagues, just saying. Very entertaining always. I just want to say it is, it's quite interesting hearing this debate versus the one that we had a few weeks ago when everyone shared these personal intimate stories about the awful experiences with the, the beauty industry, only for us to just cast it aside like it doesn't mean anything anymore. Yes, true that. For me, it's about, for me, this is about having another tool in our toolkit to be able to access. I've heard some really good stories about different hairdressing salons or beauty salons who've been able to reduce their waste, one hairdressing salon in particular in Calvin, who were able to reduce their waste by 30%. And I know that that's not what this bylaw is proposing, but it hopefully allows us to foster those relationships with the private sector to allow us to reach our goals. So I think it's important to have those tools if we can gain them, just as you would regulate a restaurant or alcohol or anything like that. And I just wanted to note that at the advisory group meeting when we had officers come and present this bylaw, many young people talked about the way that they felt sometimes exploited when they go on to get this work done because they don't understand what their rights are and they don't understand best practice standards for these, these salons and places. So I think it is quite important for people to have that choice because again, it's about choice. I think another thing for me that was really important about this bylaw going through is although councillor Young wasn't talking about the treaty, I will talk about it, and about the protections that there are for Tāmoko, which is obviously a tāonga as I talked about when we discussed this a couple of weeks ago. And finally, I just wanted to say that I don't support the BIF, the Build Heritage and Centre Fund being removed either. I think when you come into the central city and you hear these apartment owners, the people that run the cathedrals and the churches, talking about how much of, how difficult it is for them to get the money together to investigate strengthening, it's heartbreaking because they've poured their whole lives into having somewhere nice to retire only to have it removed because they're not able to afford that, that investigation. So, and I think being able to support places like the cathedral and other kind of places that make up our social and cultural infrastructure are important. How can we call ourselves the arts and cultural capital if we don't even have churches and cultural places that are open for people to go? You know, yes, we need to be open for business, but we also need to be open for cultural and social wellbeing, which is protected through the LGA. So I will not be supporting these amendments and I really do hope that we can incorporate the appearance bylaw and the BIF back into the funding because like councillor Panet said, 75% of people support a Tuputoa as it was. And I think if we're going to talk about what the community wants, we need to realise that they have strongly indicated that that is part of what they want.
Thank you, councillor Fitzsimons, councillor Day, and then I will put myself on.
Cool, thank you. I, no surprise, won't be supporting this amendment either. And I guess I want to ask my colleagues really not to make infectious diseases regulation in Wellington the victim of one decimal point. We heard that we're talking about $3 for residential ratepayers or $30 for commercial ratepayers. And really, it feels like colleagues are sort of desperately searching for a symbol to make a stand on rates. We're talking about debt funding $38 million of the revenue forecast shortfall and also debt funding a further $10 million of multi-year OpEx costs in terms of future years. So really, we're just, this is a tiny amount and I totally reject your suggestion councillor Sparrow, that this is a pet project, this is about regulation of public health. And I would have thought, I would have thought in a global pandemic, that that truly comes into focus the importance of regulating for public health outcomes. And there will be people who have made decisions that have cost lives in the past in terms of the global response to COVID. And I think here we've got a decision to make about whether we want to take quicker and more active steps to regulate public health in a way that regional public health has asked us to, doctors have asked us to, and the evidence shows is really necessary. There's a huge amount of public support for regulating nail salons and tattoo parlors. There's a massive amount of work that's been done by our officers. They've already put a huge amount of time and effort into this project after there was a unanimous resolution at this table that the next steps towards a bylaw should be taken. So I think, you know, people in Wellington expect this to happen. I've never had the kind of public response to an issue that I've had when this issue got some media coverage, people sent me photographs of their infected toenails, somebody got this beautiful wings tattoo on their back, but they showed me all of the infection around the tattoo. And that's what we're talking about, we're talking about stopping really serious infectious diseases like HIV and hepatitis. So other councils are doing this, it's a tiny amount of funding. I just really plead with you to, to consider public health and support, and vote against this resolution.
Councillor Fitzsimons, councillor Day.
So I totally will not be supporting these amendments. I would just like to echo what my other colleagues have eloquently said, so I don't need to say heaps, but I guess I just want to acknowledge the work that has happened in both of these initiatives over a long period of time. And I definitely don't agree with the fact that these are last minute things that have been added, they have been in the system for a long time. In fact, a lot of work has happened on the bylaw already. And councillor Fitzsimons has done an excellent job of leading that through a political process. And I think often we don't know the little stories out there in the community, but it's interesting when they come out and you start to realise the wide impacts of not having some protections around community. And I guess from my perspective, what I am seeing often happens with councillors, we zigzag our way around the city and we do something and then the, the temptation is to stop and not do it. And we lose the benefit of the progress that we've made and it does confuse the community too because obviously they are starting to communicate with us about how important this is to them. When it comes to the Build Heritage and Centre Fund, I want to acknowledge and thank councillor Panet for being a champion for this. It is a real challenge in our city, we know that we are, we have issues around the potential for earthquakes and it is something that we need to deal with and we can't just keep pushing it into the future to worry about it later. I guess the other thing to acknowledge is that the impact on rates by this 0.1% is really minimal, but the benefit is, is massive for these buildings that can be protected and for people's health. You can't put a dollar value like it on that, but like we're, like we're seeing, actually the proportion between the business and the residentially increase is really minimal, but actually the businesses do benefit from having the, the beauty opportunities in the city. I think you'll find that many of our people that come to work in the city have their hair done here, they have their nails done here, they have many other treatments. So the benefits are there directly to businesses but also directly to our residents. So I applaud this and I applaud the efforts that have gone in to these, these projects, but I will definitely not be supporting these amendments.
Thank you councillor Day. Now to myself on the speaking list now and then councillor Rush, send your hand. I won't be supporting this and I was one of the ones that did vote for it to be investigated in another time and situation. I probably would be supporting it. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting a bit confused here. I will be supporting removing these things because I do think there is a point to be made about saying no that Jenny has demonstrated so adequately. In particular, the beauty bylaw. I feel that in another time and place I might have very well supported this, in fact I did vote for it to be investigated. What we actually voted for was to work with the HUT City to see what they were doing about their beauty bylaw. And in actual fact, they've also decided it's not a priority for them at this time. Everyone is having to look very hard at what they're focusing on. And for me, this is about our organisation making huge efforts to actually work out what we really, really need to focus on and what is important to our residents. And I note that nobody, there was one comment out of all the many comments we received on this annual plan consultation about the beauty bylaw. And that comment, the comment was basically to the effect that they weren't sure there was actually a need for this bylaw. So, and when we had public submissions, someone did ask one of the submitters what they thought about the beauty bylaw. They kind of thought about it and said, well, it might be a good thing, but they clearly didn't have a strong view on it. I do not think this is the key thing our organisation should be focusing on at this point. And what really disturbs me-
Absolutely, me Fr. I'd just like to challenge you that it actually wasn't in the consultation documents, so people didn't note a comment on it because it wasn't there.
Okay, someone did comment, okay. If that's the case, then there was just one comment. I think it had, there was some publicity that we were considering it. The thing that most concerns me about this is at a time when we've asked- Um, the thing that most concerns me about this is at a time when we've asked our organisation to really focus and to try and find savings, we're sending a slightly confused message that actually want them to embark on quite a new bit of work, which as we've heard, it'll take a lot of work to actually work out where these places are and what we're trying to achieve in this space. I actually worry a lot about scope creep. I worry that it won't be just two hundred and thirty thousand dollars if we're to do this properly, it'll actually be a whole lot more. And if it's not done properly, I also worry about reputational risk that would end up being held accountable by the community for regulating this industry or these, these diverse industries. And it'll be just another actual real risk to council that we won't be able to manage, um, the regulation all that well without putting a lot of resource into it. So I'm not thinking this is the right time for us to be embarking on it. It's not even really about the money for me. It's about, is this the focus for our organisation when we have many, many other focuses, which are quite strategic and really cannot be deferred. So, um, in terms of the Built Heritage Fund, I would like to support that. But I think it is about our priorities and about sending a clear signal to our community that we've gone out to consult at a very difficult and stressful time on five point one. I would like to see us try to actually achieve that and not just allow things to, to make it, um, more. Um, we, we are still, we still do have a built heritage fund. It's about a million dollars one way or the other. There's some earthquake strengthening is half, yeah, it got split. It's still quite a lot of money and I think there is a point at which you could say there are many, many other things that could be added into this budget. But there are some times when you just have to say there's some things that need to be taken out as well. So look, I thank councillor Conde for putting some thought into where the, perhaps some of the things could be that needed to be looked at again and possibly not included. Um, that's all from me. Um, I'll hand over to councillor Rush, councillor Calvert as well.
Thank you. Um, madam chair. So my focus, I guess, is on the appearance by law, uh, amendment. Um, as you know, I didn't support, uh, this in the first place for a lot of the reasons which Deputy Mayor Free has just articulated and a number of others have articulated. What I, I guess I am a bit concerned about is that actually the environment we find ourselves in now is probably more positive than it was when we last debated this about six or so weeks ago in May, where it was Armageddon and we might be locked down for eighteen months and all that sort of thing. So from that point of view, um, it, it does seem that actually New Zealand, uh, and Wellington in particular will, will likely come out of this in, in a better way. We, we don't know that for sure, but, but certainly there's more optimism. Um, so I'm quite disappointed actually to hear that those that did support and authorised officers to go ahead and do the work, um, are now, um, coming back and suggesting that they're going to, uh, uh, support withdrawing this. Um, that said, that is their decision. Um, and I guess I will remain consistent with my original, uh, voting on this. Um, I felt, uh, when we did debate the consultation document that we were going out for consultation on four point nine five percent, um, only to find actually that because of other amendments that went in, uh, that was going to go up to five point one percent. But that was never specified in any of the debate we had. That was, I, I was told I should have inferred that. Um, so I was disappointed because I'd spoken widely in my community around a zero percent, a two percent, a five percent. And they all came back broadly saying that you can't hold Wellington back, we must move forward, somewhere between four and five will work. Um, so five point one for me is already a little bit further than what I was, uh, targeting for. Um, again though, to read, to, um, um, I suppose to, um, echo some of the other comments around the efforts put in by councillor Fitzsimons. Uh, I also support that and I, uh, will look forward to supporting this, um, um, this mo- motion, uh, when it comes back. I'm sure another day and I hope we don't have to start again. I hope that the work that has been done can be banked, uh, and so that we can, um, do this in a, in a streamlined way.
Okay, time's just been drawn to my attention, so I don't think there's anyone else on the speaking list. Or what are we going to do about that? Because we are a bit running, a bit behind time. Um, okay, okay, um, what do you, um, let's have councillor Con, Calvert if you can be quick and then we'll go for morning tea in a minute.
Excuse me, but I, councillor Mayor, everybody else has had no time limits, so I will-
Okay, so let's break for morning tea then, and then we won't have the pre-show. Okay.
Okay, thanks. All right. I invite councillor Calvert and then actually councillor O'Neill. And I think that might be it. And we'll go back to councillor Conde for write of reply and then we'll vote. It'll take as long as I like. But as you know, I generally get to the point. And look, I am going to support this amendment from councillor Conde. And thank you councillor for bringing this forward. I can't say I've worked in Treasury in my public sector career, but I have worked for over 30 years in lots of different organisations and had to balance small budgets and very large budgets. And also understand that especially in large budgets, you've got to be very strategically focused. I know we went out to consult on two options, 5.1. I wasn't happy about the 5.1, I wanted the 4.95. You know, you could say that was only an extra 0.15%, but it was the message that was sending. And we are in the midst of something that we just don't know what to expect next. We think it's under control, but who knows in the next few months? And yet we have no spare fuel left in the tank basically. And that might suit some people, but I would always like to have something left over for emergencies. And that's what we're going to face over the next 12 months because we really just don't know. Yes, I think some of our Wellington businesses are feeling a little bit better, but no one underestimates the hard toll that's going to be required over the next 12 months and toil as well. I actually find myself agreeing with councillor Pannett quite a bit with some of her comments. You know, that we should really be focused on some of the big stuff, the big dollars. You know, we spend half a billion dollars a year on operational expenditure over that. We spend several hundred million dollars on CapEx. And we are spending more time debating some things with 0.15 or 0.1% in our budgets. Nevertheless, we need to keep focused on what really matters. And I have to say, an appearance bylaw at this stage before we have done any engagement or education is not necessary in my view. You know, and look, the government itself, the Ministry of Health, it's not on their top priority list. We are a team of 5 million people. You know, that's the size of a lot of cities overseas or actual councils. And yet we think that we need to make this a priority for us. And look, and I agree with deputy mayor Free. You know, yes, it looks like it's only 250K, but the resources that goes into that, the focus it takes, it's going to come back. We're going to have to engage. And yet we've done nothing about engaging and educating. And we should be looking towards the Ministry of Health. But we haven't. We think we want, we just want to go off on our own and do whatever we want to do. And we're going to get into health matters and health legislation and also employment law. It sounds like we might also do a bit of climate change in this as well. So look, you know, and that's why I'm supportive of this amendment. We really need to get back to the basics that we need to do for our council. Help our officers be focused on the really important things that's going to make a big difference to our city over the next 12 months. And because otherwise we're in danger of continually fragmenting ourselves and spending effort and time on things that's not really going to be the most important things that we need over the next 12 months. And that's survival, that's helping our businesses survive and not pulling the plank from underneath them, it's helping our residents survive. And we just need to keep focused. And so, and we need to make sure we balance our books. And putting in, I know it's only 0.1%, it's really minor, but if we can't make some of those minor decisions now about keeping a proper, a realistic rates increase, how on earth are we going, what's going to happen when we get to that long term plan decisions? And the mayor was talking about how, you know, already it's up to 9% and that's before anything else is added on. So we need to show some discipline here. And for that, thank you councillor Conde for bringing this forward. And I will be supporting it because we shouldn't be dealing with rats and mice like this at the moment.
Thank you, I'm councillor O'Neill.
Thank you, madam chair. I will be brief and I will not be supporting this amendment. I believe that the appearance bylaw and the increase to built heritage investment fund both provide significant benefit for Wellingtonians. I think that we can still do all of our wonderful priorities, as officers have spoken about this morning, under 5.2 and make sure that we're ensuring public health is at the forefront of any decision that we make. Pretty much every single policy overlaps with health in some ways and it overlaps with the way that people feel in our city too. I think since this public health bylaw was started to be talking about and passed through our council, I was reading in a couple of articles that a regional public health survey released showed that there was a severe lack of understanding around safety concerns. And they surveyed salons and there was, and found that for customers there's just about no authority to report and understand when things go wrong, that there's a place that you can go to and make sure that those concerns are being lifted. I grew up in the city and I went to high school in the city. And the amount of 15-year-old girls that would get piercings in unregulated places and end up in quite a bit of trouble was quite concerning for me as well. Next, to talk about the increase to built heritage investment fund. This is a, this is a social and cultural city. We pride ourselves on the fantastic heritage that we have walking down Cuba Street. And people come to our city for the culture, for the iconic buildings. And for just $3, I think we can do that for residents. And just to briefly respond to councillor, councillor Calvert, sorry. Councillor Calvert's point, engagement and education is a part of the bylaw as well. So we have started that process already, but there is a lot more opportunity going forward as well. And I know that when the public health bylaw came to the Pacific advisory group, we spoke about tattoo and cultural practice tattoos as well. And they spoke about the need and the want for more education around these sort of spaces as well. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you, councillor Conde, write of reply. Oh, oh, sorry, the mayor.
Thanks, just a few things quickly to respond to and what one or two other people have said. Councillor Pannett, you talked about focusing on the big things. And I guess that's what I was trying to enjoin everybody to do when I introduced the plan. And what we tend to do is we spend all our time debating amendments. Not that I'm necessarily encouraging people to debate the substantive as well, but we very rarely see much focus on the substantive. And then when it comes to the things that we actually talk about in the public arena and the media, then people get excited about saying, look, you should put, you know, the things which were amended should be the things which are front and centre as opposed to the plan itself. And that's what really concerns me about our focus. So we are the architects of that and we should look at ourselves in doing that. And we are going to be looking at the big things. That's what we will do through the LTP, we will be looking at everything. We do the asset management planning. And of course, at the moment, we have the Beryl task force, where councillor Conde, councillor Rush and myself are part of a group where we are looking at the amount of money that we spend on our core infrastructure, the Three Waters. So we do do that and we will continue to do that. But my encouragement is that we actually focus on the big stuff rather than the little stuff. For me, I'm going to support the amendment. I think that these, certainly that the bylaw for me was always at the margins. I take the point that was, I think councillor Calvert made about, actually the majority of councils don't have a bylaw. I think it was 11 or 12 out of 70 have a bylaw. And I think this is something that the government should be doing. It should be one size, this is a one size fits all. It's not something, there's no local distinction here between Wellington and The Hut and Auckland and any other council. This is one of the places the government could actually do that. But they've chosen at this stage not to do that. And I think that says something. And I also think there's a danger, which I did say when we debated it before, that we are potentially thinking that we're going to fix up a number of labour and employment issues, which I don't think is our, is our area again. That's very much a government area. And the final thing just to mention is that with respect to the comments, again, that councillor Pannett made about the, about the BIF. Yes, there are millions, you know, if we have a major event, there could be millions of dollars of damage or billions of dollars of damage done. However, $100,000 is not going to fix that. It's going to be a drop in the bucket. And I guess, you know, it's a one-year drop in bucket. It was originally, the idea was to offset the cost of the cathedral. Now, we are going to fund the cathedral. In fact, they're going to start work in the next couple of weeks, which is great. What it will do is it will have an impact on other potential applicants next year. Now, the question I would ask is, which is a question I thought I asked at the time, was what we've done is we've provided ourselves less flexibility with the BIF at the moment, which effectively, the amount of money we've set aside for earthquake strengthening is a million dollars. And what we've done though is we've cut it down the middle and said some of it's for heritage purposes and some is for non-heritage purposes. And look, they might, they might both have value, but we could actually be more flexible in how we use that and possibly get the outcomes for both. And councillor Pannett, yes, let's bring out the wallet, but you've just always got to remember, it's somebody else's wallet.
Okay, councillor Conde, you'll write a reply.
Thank you, madam chair. Thanks everyone for a really good discussion. I'm going to start with the first thing, which is about this 0.1% difference and why I think that that's important. And I understand that $3 more for residential ratepayers doesn't feel like very much and it seems like we could advance this work. And I acknowledge that 5.1 is to a certain extent arbitrary. There's no particular reason we landed on 5.1 rather than 5.2. But I guess my principle that I have at stake here is just that the whole point of budgeting is that somewhere you draw a line about how much you're going to spend. And that's, respecting the line is what forces you to make the trade-offs and make sure that you're getting good value for money. And so in this case, you know, we went out to consultation at 5.1%. We drew a line there and I think as a matter of principle, it's really important to try and bring the budget in at that level. Just to come back to this point that a few people have raised about we should be focusing on the big things and not these minor things debating a few hundred thousand dollars. You know, I have some sympathy for that, but also this is just how budgeting works. This is a normal part of the process. By the time you get down to where you've drawn the line, you are having minor debates about what's in and what's out and you do spend time talking about a few hundred thousand dollars here and there. Even when you're at Treasury, when we're talking about really big money that the central government is spending, they still end up down at a few hundred thousand dollars here or there. So this is just part of the process of having these discussions. Councillor Pannett, you asked about why these things. You know, you said that, yes, Tupitua had really good support as a package through the consultation, which is absolutely true. The reason that I focused on these two things was because I think most of the comments we got back about Tupitua were around the climate change and biodiversity elements of that package that people were really excited about and those things remain. So the extra $200,000 for weed control remains. The extra $150,000 for home energy audits remain because I felt like from the consultation, those were the things that people were really excited about. Again, that doesn't mean that the built heritage investment fund or that the beauty bylaw, appearance bylaw aren't really worthy projects. Of course they are. And to address councillor Rush's point, you know, I voted for the appearance bylaw when we were considering it a few weeks ago. But when I voted on it, I was very clear that I supported the project in principle, but that I would wait and see how the funding would compare against other priorities when we got to this meeting and that's exactly what I'm doing. So I think it's been a very consistent stance. And when we look at then what's come back, you know, I think we can see that if we want to come in at 5.1%, then we have to find something that goes. So, but I do want to particularly acknowledge the staff and councillors who have worked on these particular specific projects, you know, who have now had to sit through us relitigating the value of these projects again. I, you know, I see the value in the projects and I thank you for the enormous work that you've put in on these projects. You know, but at some point we have to say no to some things and that's where we've landed. That's all I'd like to say, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, that's been a useful debate. Yes, of course, we'll take them separately. Does anyone want division? Okay, so we'll vote first on 3A. You know what to do. All right, we've got that. Okay, and now on the second part. 3B. Oh, sorry, look, I've lost my piece of paper which actually... Oh, yeah. So we've voted on 3A. Is everyone happy with their vote? There hasn't been confusion? Okay, let's move now to 3B, the first part of it, which is the, 3BA, which is the appearance bylaw. We're voting to remove or not remove that. The motion is to remove it. Okay, so vote. Rebecca? You are, you're down, okay? Against. Okay. No, it's not, it's not too late. Yeah, of course we can. So is that okay? So I declare that has been carried. And now we'll vote on the second part, so 3BB. Yeah. And this is voting to remove the BIF. Yeah. The additional BIF, because there is still BIF. And we can note that councillor Matthews is voting against this. Okay, councillor Matthews, so we can close then? She has voted against it. And again, that's been carried narrowly. Right, so we move now to the next amendment, which I think is councillor Day. Thank you councillor Day. Kauroa Koutou? I'm sorry, I do need to actually go back to the mayor because there was one thing he was meant to do when he introduced the report, which we actually didn't remember at the time, so and then it will be your turn, councillor.
My apologies, colleagues, for that. So this was something that the chief financial officer brought to me like this morning and said, we actually left something out. So we might spell it properly as well. Okay. The Wellington Regional Stadium Trust. So hopefully that's reasonably clear. If anybody's got any questions about it, it's drawn only if required. If there's anybody who's got any questions about it, then GW have already done that. So that's fair enough. Can I understand that?
In that case, I'll adjourn the meeting just so that we can have a little bit of question time?
No, you still have a bit of questions here.
Okay, it's all right to have questions. Right.
I'll just say I'll ask Andy Matthews, but this is something we briefed the council on and it's simply inadvertently missed it out of our recommendation to you. Andy?
The questions?
Okay, sorry, I thought we were...
So Mr Matthews, I thought the stadium had been paid off.
I'm not sure what your question is.
Why do they need, why do they need to have it going?
So similar, similar to, as I think all councillors were, I think the majority of you there when we briefed councillors on this matter a couple of weeks back, is that similar to our, our other CCOs, who we've got funding support built in into the plan for, the stadiums also had significant, faced significant pressures as a result of COVID-19. So obviously, it's not a, it's not a CCO itself, but the council and the regional council as settlers of the trust have agreed to provide them with, or are proposing to agree to provide them with some, some backstop loan capacity to allow them to make sure that they get through the, the current issues around COVID, only drawn as required. And the regional council have, have already put that through the council and approved that as part of, as part of their annual plan deliberations. Sure.
Councillor Calvert? Yes, this is the component agreed by Greater Wellington Regional Council. I'm assuming they've agreed that as part of a, on behalf of the other territorial councils in the region, in terms of if any extra funds were required to fund this, it would come, it comes from those ratepayers. I mean, I just want to make sure that Greater Wellington Regional Council aren't double dipping in terms of this because we've got our ratepayers and then they're also representing the others in the region, so, as well as us. So I'm just wanting some clarity around that.
It will be, it will be, my, my understanding is that from a, from a regional council's spending, remembering this is a loan, right? So it's not, it's not cash rates funded. So the, so the opportunity cost for, for, for ratepayers across the board is, is effectively only the relatively marginal interest cost for, for a period of two years. So it's, it's pretty minimal in terms of that. But what it does do is it allows the, the stadium in particular to, to make sure that it can, it can continue to operate effectively. So in terms of the rates component, it's general rates funded and, and as, as we're all aware, Wellington City is a, is a component of the region and in rates, it pays its share. So, but, but in terms of the overall, the overall cost, it's, it's marginally on the investment you provide.
Is this a bit similar to us having to, you know, our expenses? We're, we're getting a loan, basically this plan to cover some of our expenses, which are not going to be covered by normal income. Is this somewhat similar?
Very, very similar. Yeah, it's, it's similar. And, and if, if indeed the, the stadium don't, don't require those, those funds, then they'll be doing all they can to obviously operate within their own, with their own means. And effectively, it's a, it's a, it's a backstop facility for them.
Are there further questions? Councillor Panett?
Yeah. So can I just ask around process? Maybe that's a question better for you, Barbara, around sort of, just given some, some initiatives have been given a hard time, why this is coming now?
Miss councillor, because it should have been in the recommendation, it's a mistake on our part that it was inadvertently left out. It has, it has been either, Andy can clarify, we've either briefed the council on this or reported on it, on this to you previously. So it shouldn't be a surprise to you, but what is a surprise is that we've, we've left off the recommendation and created this slight diversion in the meeting for which I apologize.
And I need to take responsibility for that as much as anyone else.
Okay. Well, and look, I don't want to be critical, but this means this is the second time this has happened and it's now caused a few issues. So I guess it would be good to make sure that we, to make sure that everything is included because we're going to now probably have another debate on borrowing money. And so it's just all a bit messy. And I guess just the other question is about, so if there's some loan funding and we need to make it available, are we going to reprioritize some of the other things that we're doing?
Look, I'll ask Andy Matthews to explain. But this is all being part of our calculation.
No, no, we're not. It's built into our existing, it's built into our existing, you know, our existing calculations. So it's actually built into all the other assumptions we've made, right? We simply just didn't include it in the recommendation list, okay? So it's been... No, 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 we planned it. We've, we've planned it. And as, as was discussed and outlined to all councillors in an email a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, when, when the regional council were considering it, we'd incorporate it into our numbers. And, and simply in the, I suppose in the haste of pulling everything together, we'd simply missed it from the recommendation, councillors.
I guess it's a process point. So some things are able to get into the budget and some things aren't. And I, you know...
Is this a question?
Yeah. So, so my question to Barbara again is, is there, is there enough rigor around the process by which things, some things get admitted and which some things don't? You know, the Kauri Event Centre got in, now the BIF's out. So I'm sorry, I just don't find it a very...
So the question is, the question is, is there enough rigor around the process? Enough checking of the plans and...
Through you, Chair. Look, my, my view is this is a consequence of a very disruptive period with the pandemic, where we've had to take some unusual steps to support a number of organisations in our city. We did brief the council on it. Our error today is to have left it off the recommendation. But I am confident that over all our processes do have rigor. Thank you.
Yes, we just put this, do we have to vote on it? Or is it just becomes part of the substantive? So I am actually going to suggest we move on to councillor Day's, if everyone's happy with that, that we move on to councillor Day's amendments and can, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Kauroa Ano, Ano. Koutou. So it does feel a bit strange talking about this amendment now that we've kind of already talked about it before the meeting started. But I'm going to do what I was going to do anyway so that people understand my thinking. So these amendments are coming to you as a result of concern that I've had about the process being slowed down and the hurdles that we face. We're sort of starting to become bigger than the, the process and I understand why that's happened. So as you'll be aware, the history of this project is long and it's getting to the point where we're, having work that can happen has felt like a particularly big milestone. We've got very close a couple of times. So this playground has been in consultation documents for many years and has been in the plan since 2012. To me, that feels like quite a long time in the life of a child, pretty much, some of them their childhood. I joined this relatively late in the piece, but immediately saw the need for this and how important it is for Wellington to have something special on the waterfront that fits in design-wise as well. And we have a lot of, a lot of amazing resources on the waterfront, but there's not a lot that's there just specifically for children. So I think that is something that is really at the forefront of my mind. So there's been discussion about bringing back a report to councillors, but I've spent a lot of time reflecting on this and I'm convinced that a report just continues to delay things further. We've worked hard. We've won resource consents, design, previous consultations. There've been decisions and we've got an existing budget allocation, which leads me to propose that the right thing to do here is actually just to get on with it. If there's one thing that I've learnt in my time on council, it's that projects never get cheaper or easier and that time is not always your friend. I don't want this project to get bogged down with the rest of the challenges in the park. As we've heard today, they are significant. As councillor Paul would say or quote, now that she knows about it, it could become bigger than being her. And I can see this project having that, that same issue surrounding it. My fundamental position is that we need to finish what we start. This gives certainty to the community and trust that we see processes through. People want to see things finished, especially when we have invested money and time in the development of a project. This project, as I said, has suffered many delays and I want to acknowledge that those delays have, many of those delays have been out of our control. It is worth reflecting that when council adopted the play spaces policy in April 2017, a destination playground at Frank Kitts Park was a key feature of the policy. On pages 1432 and 47 of the policy, it highlights that Frank Kitts Park Playground is to be the destination playground for Wellington City. I'm determined that we don't make Wellingtonians wait any longer. Many of the children who gave us feedback on this development are no longer children. Let's not disappoint more children by going around the loop again. Playgrounds aren't ideological. This is core infrastructure for children. And when we look at our CBD, as I've said, there aren't that many spaces for children. And you can see that it's not ideological because we have support from councillors across the political spectrum. I'm a firm believer in creative play and that children can make fun in many places even when there isn't exciting equipment. But I still believe there is a place for special experiences and it is so appropriate that that would be on the waterfront where families come into the city for all sorts of reasons. And we do have more families living in the city as well. So these amendments seek to direct officers to proceed with this project. We're aware that the process last year was interrupted for a number of reasons. Only one tender and then we have the elections. They provided significant hurdles and the project really did stall. But I believe that it is likely that we can tender again and gain more interest. And I've been reassured by officers' comments today that through procurement, we can really think about how we can make this work. So I'm pleased to note that there is still $2.1 million which has been retained in this budget for the Frank Kitts Park Playground. But also acknowledge that given the project, the location and similar projects around the country, there will likely be need for some more budget. At the recommendation of the CE, I'm comfortable the officers will look at how this can be covered by reprioritization of CapEx budget. And I think it's worth just acknowledging that when we're talking about this particular playground, it is different to playgrounds we offer in other parts of the city, being that it's on the waterfront. And some of the landscape design considerations are impacted. Actually, at the moment, one of the current issues with the safety meeting is around the roots of trees pushing it up. So maybe that actually the root, those trees are not the right trees to have there for a future playground. And these are things the officers will be able to consider. The lighthouse was one of the things in that playground that everybody said they loved and they wanted to see stay. And the plans for, I'm happy to show anyone the plans for, are beautiful. It will have lights at night and it's got some wonderful mirrors proposed to go inside to make it an interesting experience for children. But saving that means that it does cost money and we do have to be willing to put a bit of investment in to make it something really special. We want Wellingtonians to come and have photos in this lighthouse and be proud of something that's on the waterfront that's been there for many years. It'll probably end up being a category one listed heritage building at some point. The other thing to acknowledge, and I'm sure councillor Matthews will be pleased to know, is that the accessibility lens has really been taken on this playground. And that does have a cost implication. There are many aspects of this playground which are accessible to children with all sorts of needs. And I think I don't want to see that lost. So that's why I am really asking for councillors to support this. And I appreciate the CE saying that there is some flexibility in there to make the budget reach, reach to those, those requirements. And as councillor Panett frequently reminds us, we're always underspent on our capital expenditure. So there really is no reason why we can't get on with this. And so there's further money in the budget for the waterfront for future and it may be that this is the time to bring some forward so that we can get this on the way. Into this amendment, I've added about the approach, that the approach is broadly consistent with the existing design. This gives offices the flexibility to look for opportunities to cut back any costs they can without significantly altering what is offered there play-wise. It's important to note that this playground is, as I said, is specifically designed for children of all abilities. And so without further delay, I feel that this is a project that we could see deliver this triennium. And that feels pretty unique because everything else seems to take a very long time. I would really like to thank the officers for their help in working on, on these amendments with me today. I've appreciated the constructive way that we've worked on this. I understand the challenges and as I say, they are no individual's fault. It is just the time that we're in, in the situation we're in. I'd like to thank Build Wellington and PSR teams for the work that they have done on this over a long period of time as well. And just finally want to acknowledge that this project really fits beautifully with Tupu Tua. We have a lot of uncertainty in our city currently and this gives a little bit of hope amongst the many challenges that we face. I would really appreciate your support. And I thank councillor Calvert for seconded and look forward to hearing her very different perspective to me. Okay. So councillor Calvert, would you like to speak now?
I will. And as councillor Day reminded me, I'm always the logical, fact-based person. But I'm going to take you on, I'm going to take you on a little journey as part of this. And I know, I know. So I just wanted, I want you to cast your minds back a couple of weeks before lockdown in March. And it was a lovely day, actually. It was 7th of March, it was a Saturday. And myself and my family came in to enjoy our waterfront. We started off, it was also the New Zealand Arts Festival was still going. So we brought the, brought my little Canteen Terrier Million and we went to Concert for Dogs by Laurie Anderson on Oddlands Plaza. Fantastic. Hundreds of dogs, all very well behaved and I'm sure all registered. And, and then I, after that, wandered around, had a quick bite to eat at the Farriwaka and, and then popped into the Underground Market where, actually, I think I spoke to a Don Post reporter about the pending closure of the Underground Market, which was to close a week later due to the issues around earthquake strengthening. And the vibrancy of that market, again, that was, it was a great place for afternoon tea as well. But then above that was the, there was a dragon boat festival on. And my daughter was in it and we really enjoyed watching the races. But there was a couple of hours gap between the races. And we also had my eight-year-old granddaughter, who's been around as about as long as these plans have been. And what do you do? You go and go on the playground because that is, we have to go to the playground. We have to go on to the lighthouse. And it's a great place to spend some time. And there was lots of families around and lots of just people, you know, enjoying, you know, buying your ice cream. And so, you know, when we start losing these little things, like the Underground Market, like the playground, because it needs, it needs repairing, it impacts on the fabric of our city. And look, you can see that playground when you drive down the keys. It is something, you think, oh, what's going on there? I see those little cars zooming around. What's happening there? It is worth stopping and, and enjoying. And if we continually allow things to be delayed for the next big thing, you know, we never, we're just going to have, we're just going to have a city full of closed buildings and closed facilities. So this is why I'm really happy to support this amendment. We've got to keep focused on it. It's outcome-focused. We've got to, you know, I'm sure the officers are very experienced. They'll help make it work. But what we, it's not about us saying we're going to have it right here or we're going to move a tree or whatever. The officers will come back with their expert advice. But we've got to be, as a governing body, outcome-focused. And that is ensuring, as per our 2012 policy, that, you know, we have all the plans and as per our 2017 playground... as per our 2017 playground policy, that is a destination area. And, and I just want to also draw your attention to capital E, that closed in 2012. My granddaughter's never experienced it in how it was. They're stuck in a little corner of Queens Wolf now. And that's been closed for eight years for earthquake strengthening. We still haven't got a viable alternative to replace that location. So we really, as councillor Day said, you know, we really need to find a way to make this work. And, and this is not any, this is not necessarily even a nice to have at this stage. People expect councillors to provide some of the basics and that is recreation facilities that, that doesn't stack up in the private world. We don't charge for these sort of things. So we need to make sure that we do have facilities, just as much as we're responsible for roading and rubbish and rates and all of that. This is a critical component. And we're not talking about a playground that's 10 years old. We're talking about a very old playground that does need refurbishment. It's right next to Queens Wolf, a clear, a fantastic spot on our waterfront. And look, and I want to just also acknowledge Pauline Swan, still in the, in the audience there. And look, she's giving me photos of how the space, you know, I'll just show around camera, just how the space, the space gets used, you know, how many people are on top of that and the lighthouse and seeing, seeing, but seeing the vibrancy, there's probably too many people there, but, but the vibrancy of colour and, you know, with the nearby amphitheatre and all of that. So look, we can make this space work. I'm happy to, thank you Pauline for bringing these photos in. But we can have a space that's really, not just for families, but, you know, for any passing visitors. And when people come and stay in our CBD and enjoy those facilities, they often come and spend money with our businesses and buying food or going shopping. So I'm very keen to support this and to see that we do deliver on it over the next 12 months.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, other speakers, I haven't actually had anyone raise their hand, but I, councillor Wolf, we do have one other amendment after this. So councillor Wolf, where are you going?
I'd just like to commend councillor Day and councillor Calvert, particularly councillor Day, your passion in bringing this to the table and the way that we've all worked together collaboratively. That's, that's been absolutely fantastic. Also, our CEO and Paul Andrews and his team, this is the way that we should be working and we have worked this way well. And I would hope that this would go through unanimously. You know, we've, we've actually had a problem and we've come to a stage where we can solve it. There are health and safety aspects about the current playground and we've got to resolve those. The lighthouse is iconic. We do, that area does attract tourism, you know, like it's, it's child tourism, that's want to go there. You know, like we've had some amazing first kids play there, Prince George played there, Neves played there. You know, like everybody is equal there too. And, and that is really, really important. Councillor Calvert's referred to the economic benefit. And I, you know, like I've seen what's happened in some of the parks and areas around the country. Queenstown, where cafes have set up on the, on the foreshore. Other places, you know, like I think that this justifies itself really, really easily. And, and above all, it sends a great signal to the city and to other people that we're really open for business and that our kids are really, really important to us. Finally, health and wellbeing, the health and wellbeing of our children and keeping them in a good space, and this is a good space, is absolutely paramount. And it's not just the health and wellbeing of our kids, it's their parents as well. Because I think it has been mentioned, you know, that recreational relaxation time can be handled quite well in a park such as, you know, our play area, such as councillor Calvert's shown through Pauline. And I would like to recognise the amazing achievements that you've made on the waterfront. You know, there is a legacy that people will relate to you in years to come, Pauline. You know, like you've been an absolute champion. And, and I think that, you know, this is so important and I'd just like to say a big thank you to all involved.
Right, thank you councillor Wolf. Councillor Hannah?
Thank you, just to, it is nice to get something done. I was just thinking about 2011 was the last time we did anything on waste. Takes forever to get anything done in this place and I'm sure there'll be lots of capex. And I just, I just think it's really important that we make space for groups which aren't represented. So we have support of the Fale Malai. This is a good symbol for children. We need to do more for Manu Fenua, so this will be good. I'd also just like to give just a public vote of thanks to my former colleague councillor Stephanie Cook, who actually moved an amendment, and this is a very long time ago, now to make sure that we did do at least one demonstration project for, on playgrounds for disabled children. And I have asked quite a lot of questions about, you know, if we've pushed this one as far as we can because it is very easy to kind of get these sorts of things not quite right. So I appreciate councillor Day taking that up with councillor Matthews to keep working on that, but you know, acknowledging the work that's already been done. And just the last point, I continue to be grateful. I've got a seat, it is. For the fact that we put the thirty case speed limit for children. Thank you councillor Day for acknowledging there's lots of spaces for children to play. We've just made them hostile and unforgiving. And so while I'm, you know, happy to support that, you know, children love play equipment, there are lots of other spaces that we could make much more child-friendly and which I think would possibly do more to encourage independence and creativity. But anyway, I think this is good and you will have something to cut a ribbon on, Mayor Foster, so you should be enthusiastically supporting this. Thank you.
Well, with on that note, Mayor Foster?
I'm a scissors now. Thanks, thanks Jill. Look, I understand completely Jill's frustration in the length of time this has taken. And in fact, when officers approached and said, look, we've got some health and safety issues around the playground at the moment and what are we going to do about that? We said the one thing that we can't do is you can't close it, not at the moment. We've got, we cannot close it without having a way forward. And a way forward meant getting on with action. So, and I'm very keen that we do that. The only concern I've got, it's a fantastic design, and my only concern is just that we need to keep a bit of fiscal prudence in this as well. And I took from the words that you said councillor Day when you introduced it, and I think if I quote them back, officers can back, can cut back without significantly altering any of the play features. Because we heard from, from Paul Andrews that there's a significant amount of the costs in the landscaping and he has specifically said moving trees and rain gardens. Look, if we can get the playground result without spending, you know, you know, a lot of money, that would be great. So, you know, I think that, and a number of people have said the officers will give us, should give us some advice as we go through this process. Look, I think that's perfectly fine to do that, so we can get on with doing it. The other thing, of course, is that they have said that there are some concerns about how it relates to whatever else happens in the, in the park. I guess, again, we'd like to get some advice on how that, those all fit together. And then the last thing to mention is that councillor Calvert, I think you said the playground does need refurbishment. So I don't think this has had, in fact, I think from, you know, when my children were using, which is a little while ago now, you know, progressively some of the apparatus were falling apart and being taken away. This, this playground is now, I think it was nineteen eighty-nine, I think, something like that, it's, it's very old and by and large, we would have at least retrofitted, you know, retrofitted, replaced the apparatus probably at least twice during that period of time. And the final thing that I should say is, just in terms of reprioritisation, when we talk about reprioritisation of capex, what we're actually doing is we are adding to the capex because the other stuff doesn't disappear. Unless we take something out, the other stuff has not disappeared, we're just pushing it back. And you're a hundred percent right that we are always underspent, but we are budgeting for a hundred million dollars underspent already. That's already factored into the budget we've got in terms of our capex. So happy to support this on the basis of, as I understand it, it's not the sky's the limit in terms of the cost. But, but we're going to be responsible about this and ask our officers to work through this responsibly.
And we now have councillor Rush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We recently discussed representation on the council and there are no little children. But I know a couple who are very excited about this. So my six-year-old son and three-year-old daughter, we regularly go down to Frank Kitz and enjoy the facilities there. But when we compare it to other places that we go to, Christchurch, the Margaret Mahi play playground there, I mean, it brings in hundreds, if not thousands, of people every day. I mean, even when we're in Oteke, the kids will demand that we go to the Levin Park Playground because it's such an awesome sort of experience. When we travel through to Hawke's Bay, Paia Tua, we must stop there. I mean, these are the sorts of things that drag people, you know, blurry-eyed parents perhaps into the CBD on a Sunday for their children to enjoy the area. And it's, although it's a bit rustic, shall we say, at the moment, it could be so much better, it could be iconic. And frankly, I think there can be a bigger budget actually justified. If we can justify play centres for adults, for conventions, then surely we can justify a bigger budget. Don't tempt me. So anyway, so but, but I mean, I'm very much supportive of getting on with something. And whilst I recognise that there are some issues that need to be resolved, I think that can be done along the way. I recall the procurement process for the Omoororol Reservoir, which was very clearly designed to teed out from the perspective of tenders, the best sorts of solutions to some of those problems. And I think with some careful processes, we can do the same in this area. I also think that, that funding from the community in different ways and businesses could also be explored. Certainly, there's one place to get coffee there, but along the whole waterfront is an iconic area which screams out for more sorts of businesses and facilities. So some payment rentals perhaps. So overall, I think that this is in reality a bit of a no-brainer, let's get on with it. And I commend councillor Day for bringing it to the council.
That's great. Look, actually, because we've had so many in support, all we're going to actually do is ask if anyone wants to speak against this. And then I'll probably just put the, write a right of reply and put the vote. So does anyone want to speak against it? Councillor Conde, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I absolutely support the idea of having a destination playground on our waterfront. I think it would be an amazing asset for our city. I absolutely support the idea that we should be trying to decouple this playground project from the wider precinct because as we've discussed, the wider precinct now has a number of very complex issues of its own. And I think it would be good to get on with the playground as quickly as we can without having to get drawn into some of those earthquake strengthening and other things that are likely to take a long period of time. I think it's great that we're going to be looking at options around value engineering and whether we can look at some of those landscaping costs to see whether we can deliver this playground. But I just have, I have significant concerns around the intention of this motion being essentially to refuse officer advice prior to going out to tender. As I understand it, the chief executive offered to come back with a report back on this in September, which isn't that far away, that would have given councillors a chance to vote on all of these options and see how we were actually going to take this project forward. We frequently, as councillors, complain that we don't have enough power over staff. And yet in this case, as far as I can see, the meaning of the motion is to actually delegate this decision and these choices substantially to the staff to make as, as they go through this, this process. So, you know, my issue is not with the outcome and the intention here, but just the, the process that we're going through. You know, I think it would be a very minor delay to have the officers come back with the advice about how, what the challenges are with decoupling this programme, this playground from the rest of the precinct. And I think that then we would be able to exercise our authority as councillors to give them a very strong steer and direction on what it is that we want them to deliver. Whereas at the moment, I feel like this amendment doesn't give us strong direction as, as some councillors might like.
Thank you councillor Conde. I think we had one more from councillor Simons and then we will probably write a right of reply and wrap up.
Just briefly, because my child is fallen over in the playground. Oh, he's all right. And I just wanted to acknowledge councillor Day for the work that she has done with officers on this. And I think what we're seeing is a real commitment to getting something done. And sometimes that means you have to bring decisions to a head and bring them to this table and get the votes and then empower officers to get on with it. And I also want to acknowledge the constructive way the officers have engaged with her and others in trying to find a way forward that actually means this project gets back on track and that we deliver the playground as soon as we can. And play, this playground is very important. Wellington doesn't have a destination playground. Wellington is a great city for kids, but frankly, our playgrounds are embarrassing. You, I agree with councillor Rush, you go to places like Purirua or out to Avalon, Christchurch and provincial New Zealand, they have much better playgrounds than we do here in Wellington. So today, we're making a commitment to a destination playground and that means that it should be able to keep a child occupied for up to about two hours. And that's a really important, play is a really important thing for children. It's actually a human right. The United Nations has determined that play is a fundamental human right for children. And it is what children and young people do when they follow their own way. And as councillor Wolf said, it also is a tourist attraction. I know as a parent, that when we're planning holidays, we look for places that are going to be good for children. And people around New Zealand will do that and consider this playground when they're deciding whether or not to come to Wellington. So I ask you for your support.
Okay, you're right. Write a reply, councillor Day.
Thank you councillors for your, all your comments and your support for this very important project. I want to just share that when I talked about this with my fifteen-year-old daughter, her eyes lit up. And as a fifteen-year-old, it takes a bit to get their eyes to light up. But it reminded me of how if you have a really good play space, when I was talking about some of the elements in the playground, she could still see there was benefit and fun for her at her age. And I know that it doesn't even stop there because I've seen pictures of councillor Calvert on a flying fox in Kandala. So actually, this, this is a play space for everybody. And we know that it's predominantly, you know, geared at children and it's made to be accessible to children. But we know that adults enjoy joining in with the play too, and that's something important to acknowledge. I also do want to acknowledge that Manu Fenua have been included through the process, the design process, and will continue to be included in the, in the process because obviously this is important, Fenua for Manu Fenua. The accessibility, I acknowledge that I own it and there is definitely always more that we can do. I can say that there has been a lot of consideration given to accessibility from different perspectives. So there will be sound involved, you know, for children who have vision impairments, there's ways that they can interact with it. There is quite a good area where children could sit and explore within that environment. And so just to respond, in response to the mayor, yes, the sky is not the limit, it's never the limit when it comes to these sorts of projects. But I think councillor Rush actually articulated it well when he said, we, we need to think about the equity that we give for play spaces for adults. And actually, this is an opportunity for children to have some, some space and important space in our city. And it's important to acknowledge that some of the costs that come out through this that make it seem more expensive is because of where it is, as I've said before. And it does relate to the rest of the park. But I think it's really important to note that we don't need to allow the process of what's going on in the rest of the park to slow this down. This playground, it fits with the area, it has iconic aspects to it and it does have some unique items. So the, the plan was to have some things that were different, that children won't see in other playgrounds around the city. And our designers have done an excellent job of thinking about that and suggesting some things which will get children excited to, to come in and see the, see this playground and enjoy it. I acknowledge councillor Conde's comments, but I wonder if maybe I haven't done a very good job of expressing the length of this project to you and what has happened and how vigorous the process has been till now. It's, it's easy to always say, how do we cut it back? How do we, how do we go through it again? But I guess it's that whole thing of perfect being the thing that often stops anything happening. So I think we just have to acknowledge that we have a really great design here and that we're definitely not refusing officer advice. But what we're saying is we believe that the officers have the ability to go off and deliver this because we can see what's there. And I think you said a three-month delay is not, is not a major delay. Well, actually, in a three-year triennium, three months does actually become quite major. So, and of course, then there's a process that follows from that. And the conversations that I've had with both Barbara and other officers over the last few days- And the conversations that I've had with both Barbara and other officers over the last few days, I have confidence that our officers understand the importance of this project and how to deliver it. But they they also understand that there is there is a need to be um cognisant of of how much it costs in the scheme of everything else. So I feel really comfortable and I really thank you all for your support.
Right, I think with that, we shall go to the vote.
Can we take it separately? Because I would like to support 3C.
Oh, okay. And of course we can, but I have actually cast my vote. We may need, we may need to write, um, can we wipe that and start again? So we're looking then at um 3C was about the one 2.1 million budget um being allocated and carried over. So we'll put that one. So so we're doing the first part of um the amendments, which is about the carryover of the existing 2.1 million. If you want to vote. Uh, the wording is, oh, we have it in our, no. Um, Jenny and Rebecca, I think both indicated yes. So that's unanimous. And we will now take the second bit, which again is on your printed sheets, which is noting that the council will seek additional tenders for the upgrade of the playground, consistent with existing resource consent and broadly consistent with the existing design. And if additional budget is required, um it can be managed through capital expenditure and reprioritisation, which has all been well canvassed in the debate. Okay, so that's um all but Jenny on that one. Wellington's children will.
Thank you very much, people. Um, I now, moving on, invite councillor Foo to speak to her amendments. We are still aiming to finish at 12:30, if not before.
Kia ora tato. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. And um thank you to my fellow colleague and supporter of the Environment councillor, O'Neill, for seconding this. Um, really, this this amendment is just a a bit of an emphasis or an I I dot and a T cross as we've actually already um to the best of my recollection, this was a unanimous um vote, really one vote in the annual plan, plan, um earlier debate, uh so earlier session. Um, but what I would like to do is just maybe speak a bit to the substantive. And then I've done that, um, Madam Chair as well. Oh, Bill, I mean, it would just save me. Okay, so um I do just want to thank officers for all the work on the on the annual plan and particularly on the engagement. Um, just during that time, it was a really big, big process to go through. I also want to thank the officers that hand-held some of us councillors through the webinar session. Um, and then it was amazing to get feedback from some of our constituents saying how much they love being able to cook dinner and and listening to us going through that process. So thank you for that. Um, just also, I I'm in awe of the officers for the financial wizardry that goes on. And no matter how many of those costs keep coming in, somehow you manage to to re to rejuggle things. Um, so yeah, thank you for all of that. I'd also like um the mayor, like to thank all of those who submitted, particularly those who came in to talk to us. It really helps understand what our community wants. Um, but also thanks to Wellingtonians for the overwhelming support on on the higher rates amount and for being fully understanding of where we were at and what the future might look like for Wellington and where we needed to spend our money. But also on that, I would like to thank Wellingtonians for the overwhelming support on the particular issue that we're addressing today, which was around increasing landfill fees. It is hard to to do these things sometimes because you know that it's not going to be good for all. But actually, 83.5% of Wellingtonians were in support or somewhat support that we keep the increase in the landfill fees in a way so that we could help change the behaviour on our on our waste habit. As so aptly put in our um annual plan feedback today, waste has become one of the major concerns for our city, but not only for our city, for our country. And, sorry, I was just waiting for the, um. And while we are raising these landfill fees, they are just one of the many prongs, as we discussed in the bylaw last week, to help with this. Um, I do want to acknowledge that there may be um with the increase in fees, a good a good amount available that we will reinvest into waste minimisation projects or recycling or grants. And actually, by law, we are required to do that. But so this is really just, um, yeah, as I said, dotting those i's and crossing those t's. But uh the fees, as a lever, I just also want to acknowledge that um we did not raise the fees for organic or green waste, which is an incentive to separate. And when we are dealing with waste and seeing it as a resource, this is a really critical part of the way we go forward. So so just remember, it's about purity of product. The fees differentiation will encourage us to to um to separate out our waste into the pure streams, which will enable us to reuse it. So thank you for your support, colleagues, and thank you, Madam Chair.
And do you have a second, Dave?
Yes, councillor O'Neill.
Councillor O'Neill, councillor O'Neill, would you like to speak now?
Yep, I'm able to speak um to just the amendment and then also just to the, yeah, okay, cool. I'll be brief. Um, yep, I'm very, very happy to support councillor Foo's amendment to allocate landfill fees um to the increase in landfill fees to waste minimisation um outcomes. I would like to acknowledge the fantastic work of our offices in the area and councillor Foo's commitment to waste minimisation and to education and behavioural change. Just myself and I know many other councillors have learnt a lot over lockdown. And I I do think of councillor Foo in a tiny little rubbish bag um through through the lockdown period and and um taking the time to ease us through some of those changes. Um, beyond the rubbish bin, there's a responsible recycling plan. And a lot of these initiatives um make way for projects and other events and management um things, some fantastic events like the wonderful Newtown Fair and others will will benefit from this as well. Um, and support different projects to reduce our waste to zero. Um, and then also to acknowledge that a lot of these provisions, um when we try to understand climate change, there's a big part of it is a transition for me. And a lot of that comes through education and behaviour and opportunity. And sometimes it takes a little bit of extra grants money or a little bit of extra time and support to help us through to be able to get to that um zero waste or those climate goals as well. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, look, I am trying to finish us by half past 12, but at the same time, you have a right to speak. So um I have councillor Calvert and councillor Pannett.
Thank you. Um, perhaps councillor Foo would to address this and her write a reply. But 3E, uh my understanding is that we've already requested this. So I'm not quite sure why we're doing it, um directing officers. If 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 we have actually um agreed to it, then surely if at the best, it's a noting that the operating surpluses will um generate it, um will be allocated against this activity. So I'm asking just whether that's the the right wording on this amendment. And I'd also dislike if councillor um Foo could also confirm that's the 2020 slash 21 um landfill fee increases. I think it would be good to be specific because that was my understanding, that it was in relation to that. Um, I'm not sure of the purposes of 3.4. Um, I think it's very hard to allocate operating surpluses when you may not have determined them. Um, and so if you look at it, it's it's and and no later than the end of the financial year. Well, you could still, you know, I don't think our accounting systems are that quick um in terms of being able to determine all those. And and I also find it very unusual that you report back to the portfolio lead. I don't believe that's the role of a portfolio leader. Um, I actually think it's about reporting, if any report back, it's back to the committee or um council as the governing body. Um, so um especially the way 3.5 F is written, I can't support this because I believe this goes beyond what is is actually realistically possible, both within our delegations and also our accounting systems. Thank you.
Um, I think it might be quite good to just, we can all hear some advice on this one, actually. Um, but are we actually just rubber stamping something which would happen anyway? And um also some advice about the timing, um which is alluded to in 3F. So I don't know quite who I would, Moana, thank you.
So I have actually just asked Mike to come down just to be really clear. My understanding was this is just confirming what we already do. But I think we need to to hear from him, so I'll go find him now.
Oh, in that case, we'll take a five-minute adjournment. Um, but I'd just like to, since I've got a little bit of a moment, I'd just like to actually note that today is Andy Matthews' last annual plan um for his um time at WCC. Um, his last day is actually the 17th of July. But um and David Chick is is today is David Chick's absolutely last day. So look, you both have done an immense amount on ELT since I've been on council six. I know you haven't been here the whole six years, Andy has, um of my time on council. But you have both been outstanding, in my view, outstanding um officers and have given us much good advice and many great projects that have been delivered um under your sort of watchful eyes, both of you. So be a loss, um but we know, you know that we are going with our um every good wish for whatever it is that awaits you. Yeah, so we've so we'll have um five minutes. Can be back as soon as possible. Can be back as soon as possible. Yeah, I know, I know. Pay it by ear to a certain extent. Welcome back, councillor Foo. We will now pick up where we left off and it's over to you again. No, I think what, I think what we probably need you to explain is the discussion that you've had and what you've decided, because clearly there's been some things changed in what's front of us.
In the name of simplification, we have removed three F.
Can I, can I suggest that Andy Matthews explains why?
So, look, I think we understand the intention. What we're trying to do is just try not to overcomplicate the administrative processes that you're, that you're trying to agree to and the timing by which you could actually get that done. Maybe, maybe a level of compromise councillors is that you just included in, in the, in three E with something that said, something going on the end of it that said with, with appropriate and timely reporting or something which actually gets you that, we understand what you mean, but in terms of the timing, you get that back. Because the reality is, the way it will work is you're very unlikely to be able to, to be able to spend all the utilisation in that year. And effectively what you're saying is we just want to know what the amounts are so that we can be clear about how we're going to utilise those funds going forward. Would that be inappropriate compromise councillors?
I'm fine with that.
All right, so the mover is fine with that. Is the second a fine with it?
Yeah, so my understanding would be if the mover and the second are of this motion are happy to have the adjustments that have been made, that that's now what we have on the table in front of us. So I invite debate. Councillor Penna.
Right, so this actually is possibly a slightly bigger issue than what it looks like. So as you heard me say a while ago, 2011 was the last time we did anything significant in waste in the city. Since the regional waste governance group got together, you know, we've been doing some of the necessary planning and assessment. But we haven't actually made any changes except, made some advancements on progressing a landfill so we can dump more. The three bits of money I got in the last triennium to make some real progress on waste were the organic trial, money for a resource recovery centre, business case, and also for organic, what we actually, how we manage the organic material if we collect from households. So the organic trial has started or will start, there is more planning, it's, you know, it's finally got off the ground. But this council has been not, as I've said in the, when we had our ballot, we have been very slow to make progress. And I think councillor Foo's amendment has been excellent. I think she's, she's actually thought about how all this money that we can make from waste can be used to be put into something else. And I'm very comfortable with there being consultation about how this money is to be used. Recycling is starting to fall apart, as we've seen now, we've got to, you know, give our residents complex instructions about what they can and can't recycle. I'm not convinced that more recycling is the best use of the money. And we really need to get on track with dealing with the organics, which absolutely have to be out of our landfill. And it should have been done some years ago, unfortunately with a sustainable solution. The last one unfortunately didn't work very well. So I, you know, I, reporting is not enough.
If I can just verify, you're speaking to the amendment?
Yeah, and I'm, so what I'm saying is that I think there actually needs to be some guidance given to officers about how this money should be spent. We're potentially talking about a lot of money. And I appreciate, I get all the background of this, because of course our ETS liability, which, I mean, I just cannot believe that we spend, waste so much money, you know, dumping rubbish. So I guess I would like to move an amendment that we give some guidance on that, on how the money should be spent, because we haven't made the progress that I set out. I know there's been good reasons for that and all the rest of it, but it's really time to get, to get some real wins on the ground with this. And I think councillor Foo has a lot of expertise in the waste area. And so all I would just like to say is that there is consultation, not just with councillor Foo. I'm happy for other councillors to be involved and it's, and it's, it's fine for there to be reporting. Councillor Calvert's point was fair enough, that there should be reporting through the quarterly report. But I think there needs to be some direction given, because, you know, I have given direction prior and we haven't got very far on that, and I think we do need to make some more progress. So I would just like to add the word with timely consultation and reporting. No, no, I want consultation. This is not about the officers just basically, because I don't know what they're going to do with the money and I think.
But, I'm sorry, but it's just, but it's a point of order because, but this is about this amendment.
Yeah, and I'm, no, and I'm speaking and I'm saying I want to move an amendment to talk about consultation.
But you haven't foreshadowed, I mean, I don't know.
No, I'm speaking, I'm speaking, I'm speaking.
Councillor Calvert, with all due respect, I'm the chair. I do think that there is an issue here in that you seem to be speaking, not speaking about the amendment, but speaking about an amendment that you'd like to bring.
No, 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 I just want to put a word in, but the one that she's already moved.
That can only be done, I believe, with the leave of the meeting.
Yeah, okay, so I'm putting it up there, so I'd just like that. Otherwise I'll foreshadow it and we'll debate it separately.
And I, and I must admit, it's not clear to me who you'd be consulting with and why. You know, I think this is getting bigger than men who.
No, it's not, it's not councillor, councillor Free. I have just explained that I think the officers need some direction to make sure that we are using the money in a strategic way to reach our waste minimisation goals. I have expressed some concerns about the progress that this council has made on waste and I would like it to be more directive. That is my point. So I'm happy to foreshadow the word and consultation, that's fine, but I think it does need some change.
But is that, is that public consultation, Calvert?
No, no, no.
This is, we may need to adjourn the meeting, just seek a little bit of officer advice.
I'm sorry, I've just, I think I have explained, I acknowledge councillor that it could be done with councillors. It's not public consultation, it's to do particularly with the portfolio leader and with councillors, and that's fine. I'm happy to have some quarterly reporting.
Right, councillor Foo. I seek officer advice. Let us actually break for lunch. And when we come back, I hope we can actually move through this one with some speed, because actually I think we are really down in the weeds with this and I am not entirely comfortable with what the process is. But we'll have lunch, we'll seek some more officer advice and we'll come back. We will come back, there is lunch supplied, and we will come back at.
So if I could just ask colleagues to take their seats again, we will pick up where we left off. It's good to have a break. Yeah. So. So I've actually just been given some advice about standing orders. I'll just wait. I've been given some advice about standing orders that because the motion was moved and seconded, the two bits were moved and seconded. We can't actually, the mover and seconder can't actually remove it once it's been tabled. The second part can be removed with the leave of the meeting, but that means 100%. We can, yeah. So we do, I believe, have another revised amendment coming in. Okay. So have we got the leave of the meeting then to remove, and how many people are here? Two. Okay. So to remove 3F, as has been struck out and we're all happy with that, can I just confirm? Well, it's been struck out, so we're happy to have it struck out. Do we have everybody's agreement? Right, so we're back to having councillor Foo. And we do have some advice from officers, I believe, or some new words coming. We'll get that up. Okay. Yes, you may speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that's so kind. So look, thank you to officers and councillor Foo just trying to work a way through this. So you know that my very strong push to make sure that we get on the right track with waste. So the idea, I think, is that we need some rigor around how we'll spend the money. So rather than we just sort of canvass, shall we just flick it off to grants, which there'll be a new grant around in December. But I think, even though I don't really like asking for lots of reports, it probably just doesn't need a bit of thinking through. It will be timed in with the SMURF project because this is all one, things have got to work together. And, you know, there'll also be some thinking about what our strategy is around waste so that it's really clear what our priorities are and so the officers know what work needs to be carried out. Because I think they've heard quite loud and clear that there is a desire to lift our game in this space. So thank you very much to officers for coming up with this wording.
Um. Two recommendations, more amendments. Anyone else, or are we all happy? All right, we're all happy. Well, let's go ahead with a vote on them in that case. Oh, write a reply perhaps, or do we need that councillor Foo?
Kewada, fellow councillors and thank you officers. And now I can't tell you how overjoyed I am. Thank you councillor Penne. Because really there are some bigger things at play here. We do need an overarching strategy for how we're going forward. And my understanding of what the community is telling us is they understand the position we are in with the landfill extension, but they will not concede to that without a meaningful waste minimisation plan running alongside. So just out of a bit of fallout, cash, correct, we've got the plan to go alongside it, which I think will help us in how we tell the story of how we go forward. So that is a very big win today. So I do now really, really ask you all for your support on this seconding, just backing this amendment. Kewada, thank you.
And so we will now vote separately or together? Together, right. Councillor Conde is for it. And councillor Matthews has had to leave, so. I think that's unanimous. Right, finally, we have reached the moment of actually debating the substantive, which is our annual plan. So do I have people who wish to debate? Or say anything? Right, councillor Penne.
So I'd just like to thank officers, particularly this year. It's been a really difficult time. I just think now we think about lining up at the supermarket and being afraid to go out of the house and getting sick and all the rest of it, it's actually been really difficult. So thank you. Thank you to the submitters too for being passionate and committed enough to care again during a stressful time. And I did think the engagement report was really good and we got a lot of great demographics. I think we need to take a pause to congratulate ourselves on the fact that we are not all clung. There may be some different ideological views, but, you know, they've had massive service cuts and we have not. And I'm really proud of that and I think that's a good story to tell. So because I didn't want to spend the whole morning arguing over 100K for BIF, I just want to just talk at some high level issues. You heard my question to Mr Matthews around insurance risk. I was thinking about moving the amendment, I thought that might be a bit random, but that's actually if we were going to spend any money, maybe that's where we needed to do it. I think that's a pretty high risk strategy. That we, you know, potentially we need to close the gap by borrowing in the event of a quake, given the level of risk that we face. Insurance is not going to get cheaper or easier, in fact it's going to get more difficult. It will be one of the defining issues of the century, I think. Because insurers are very smart, they know where the risks are and they knew that climate change was coming a long time ago and it's going to be very difficult for us to access funding because we should have taken action. I note Ms McCarro's point about the cost savings that we found are not sustainable. And I think that's helpful advice from the officers that, you know, that we can make some short term savings, but often it's not always possible in the long term. And saying that, through the chair to the staff, hopefully we are thinking about the way we work now and actually flying off overseas all the time isn't necessarily needed. I would like to thank councillor Young for talking about paying to, borrowing to pay for the groceries, which is essentially what we're doing. I think it's a fair enough point, but obviously these are exceptional circumstances and so we're going to have to do that. But we need to be clear, really, really clear in any public communication following from this meeting that that's what we're doing. And we need to possibly get a bit smarter about earning some more cash in a good way. The landfills, which is why I banged the table last night councillor Foo. So the fee increases, I think, are going to be quite problematic. So the approach of this council has been to gradually increase them. We have run into problems when we have, Mayor Foster will know this very well, when we have not raised them and then find that the jumps are very, very significant. And so I see why that's been done, but it is tricky. Yes, the BIF. Councillors will be thrilled to know it will be going up to a million dollars. There will be an amendment or it will be in the substantial of the LTP. We need to get serious about earthquakes. I'm just, you know, I've been trucking away at this, but we have to have a step change to make our city more resilient. I'd like to thank all the submitters that gave such strong support to Tuputoa. You've never seen me smile so much in a council meeting. Every time they were like, oh, it's so great. I'm like, yeah, that's awesome. So all those, the green infrastructure, the weeds, the home energy audits are all going to do good things for climate change. I would like to make a response to those who said they're luxuries, they are not. They are absolutely essential. And this is, I guess, the problem that I've had with some of the debate today, that we've gone on and on about tiny amounts of money and not about some of the big costs of failing to take action. The costs are running the billions and so I'm quite happy to spend 100K here and there. And economic benefits for you councillor Calvert in particular will eventuate. Business cannot run without good infrastructure and actually a planet, which is under strong pressure. The central library, look, I do feel a bit bad about that. I think people would have been expecting to see more about this. So I think we've got to, we're going to be having a big debate about this soon. So we do need to make some progress on this one. I think there is a high expectation that we will take that. And I did have great gratitude to the submitters who gave strong support for lifting the landfill fees, looking at some of the commentary, that they really understood that things need to change. And so that was very hopeful. So thanks again to everyone and of course to colleagues who have worked hard throughout the consultation process and had a big debate about some of these things. And hopefully this will enable us to set an even better plan next year.
And councillor O'Neill.
Kewada, I don't need to take very long, but I really just wanted to do a big acknowledgement to our staff who went into lockdown and then essentially had to rewrite an annual plan, which is no small feat. So to Bezen Andy and your teams and to Barbara, thank you so much for what you've done. And then to your teams for the work that they've done on engaging with our community and trying some new things, which were really, really were engaging and interesting. And I just want to particularly acknowledge councillors Paul and O'Neill who brought forward the opportunity of engaging with young people. And my computer has just started up again, it was having a bit of a tantrum, so I haven't managed to check the numbers. But from when I was looking at the report, it looked like there were about 10,000 views on that Facebook event, which I think is pretty outstanding. And I can pretty much guarantee that won't have just been from young people, but the forum and the way that it was done was very engaging. So thank you to the staff for responding to a very quick request and to seeing how that went. I hope that we can build on that and do some more because it was enjoyable to be involved with. But, and I think, I also want to acknowledge the mayor because he did it in very good humour and it was engaging, it was real and people got to ask all sorts of questions. Well, you know, sometimes there are questions that get put forward that are a bit confronting or a bit challenging and you just got in there and did it. And I think it made it engaging, so thank you for doing that, we appreciate your leadership there. And I want to acknowledge councillor Matthews because, you know, engagement is a very important part of what we do and her leadership there, working with the team on the water and us was very much appreciated. And just quickly, I want to acknowledge that it was really heartening to hear so many submitters who were submitting on very different koupapa, but all coming back to the fact that they appreciated the values of Tuputoa and what it was saying to our city, that we want to do better. And, you know, we have heard from people along the way that say, and we heard it the other day in the grants committee meeting from a group submitting, saying, we don't actually necessarily want to build back to the way things were before. There are times when we actually want to go beyond that because the way it is now for some people, well, the way it was before COVID-19 wasn't actually good and it wasn't acceptable. And so it's about making sure that we're considering everyone when we are planning into the future. And, you know, just also want to acknowledge councillor O'Neill for getting the weeds in there. Actually, in our communities, it's one of the things that we've heard lots about. So, you know, sometimes we think getting down in the weeds is not a good thing. But in this situation, our communities are constantly asking us about help with weed control because it's a big challenge. It's a really weird thing just to comment on and single out, but there's so much I could say about it. But yeah, just a big thank you to everyone.
Right, councillor O'Neill.
Thank you. I'll try and be brief, but there were a few acknowledgements that I just wanted to make as well. First of all, we have excellent dedicated officers that I know have worked overtime and over hours right until 4am, emails coming through and the days of first introducing the paper and through to be able to work with us and get some really fantastic amendments in there. There's a challenge that has been presented to us as a council from the public to build back better than we had before, to not go back to the status quo. And I'm really, really proud of the amendments that we've got in this plan and some of the fantastic capex projects and operational changes that have been made too. And I think I saw a bit of discussion online this morning, but just to take a moment to acknowledge the privilege that we have in this room to be happy and healthy in Aotearoa and to fangenui atata, to have governments and a council that has responded so well to keeping communities safe over this time and to acknowledge that we're in a very, very lucky place and that we have an amazing opportunity to even think about doing more than just, than just keeping people safe at the moment. I had a range of quotes that I wanted to pick out through the different submitters as well, but I think I'll leave it for time. But just to sort of touch on the amount of public pressure and warmth and acknowledgement and to acknowledge the input of young people, we had the highest amount of visitations to us and highest amount of submissions during the youth engagement evening. And just to really, just briefly, I'll talk briefly about the weeds. But many conservationists and many botanists and community members have spoken about the often fighting, losing battle. And it's not always fashionable to talk about pest weeds. It's kind of fashionable to talk about pests and birds, but pest weeds is a bit of a challenge. So I'd like to thank all my colleagues for standing behind that as well. And I'm overjoyed that you have also been able to learn about different introduced species and pests through this time as well. And to consider this the beginning of a preservation of some of our fantastic assets that we have in Wellington, which is our green belts and our community members as well. And that the natural environment is not just something we agree on politically, but that we invest in the long run. So I'm really happy today and I know many others will be too. And I just want to say a big thanks.
Other speakers, yes, Diane.
Not necessarily wanted to focus on weeds, but if I'd had my way, we wouldn't have had the money in for weeds, to be honest, but I didn't want to get back into the weeds to debate that. But I thought I'd just mention it because I actually, I just want to come back, you know, I'm pleased how we've sort of come together and we've got sort of agreement on around the 5.1%, which is really 5.6 for residential ratepayers. But if we think this has been tough, the next 12 months is going to be really tough. And we've got an LTP coming, going forward. And, yeah, we won't get everything we want or even necessarily we need. There are some tough times and what I'm really pleased to see in the annual plan is we will be extending that rates postponement for the first quarter rates as well. And I think that's important that we recognise that because some people may own their own home but have very little disposable income. So we need to think about that in terms of how they are able to fund their rates, which is a duty on all of us. It is not our money, you know. The rates intake we get comes from ratepayers and I acknowledge that renters are paying rates through their rent as well, but it is other people's money. And so I think we've got to be cognisant on that. We've heard a lot, you know, from people giving their feedback and all of us are out, you know, in our communities and we're also getting feedback as well. And what I have definitely been hearing is, you know, we need you to make sure that this is not, this next 12 months is not necessarily a year for building back better. That is the broader rebuild phase. This next 12 months is about enabling those people who have contributed to our city to survive and have the choice about going forward in whatever business venture or where they choose to live. So this is about keeping people's head above water. And that's where our focus has got to be. to be, and, and not dump them for the next new shiny thing. So I, I think our annual plan provides that balance, but we need to make sure that we are looking after the, our people and our businesses that have made the city what it is today. So, yeah, so I will be supporting it, would have liked a percent lower, but nevertheless, I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Right, Shaun, oh, sorry, councillor Rush.
Thank you, madam chair. I'd just like to again thank the submitters that came in. It was quite inspiring actually to have two days of folks coming in and having prepared to, to say things and some interesting imagery that came along with it. But one of the things I, I felt came through was a theme of community desire to do more, wanting a council to facilitate, not hinder, and, and also a desire to reacquaint themselves with their natural environment and their communities, and certainly that's going to play well with the sort of initiatives that we're hoping to bring in water over the long-term plan, where I'm going to be looking at heritage sites, but not ones that humans have built, but the ones that, that nature had built, and maybe we can start putting some money aside for those instead of some of those buildings that we all love as well. So anyway, I, I also would say an amazing job to officers, staff, Barbara as well, but also to the councillors as well. I mean, this is, can be a controversial forum, but throughout the period of COVID-19 development of, of this plan, we have worked pretty well together, I think, collaboratively, and with a, a measure of common sense that is not often associated with the Wellington City Council. So it's been both a challenge, but ultimately a delight, and so thank you all for that experience, and more power to it, on to the long-term plan.
So I'll now say that I'm actually, you know, I'm very grateful that we've got to this point, and it did seem a challenge at one stage when we were all locked down, and the plan that we thought we were going to deliver obviously wasn't going to be the one we were really going to need to deliver. And I really want to pay tribute to many of our staff who kind of held it together in quite extraordinary circumstances, and not least our CEO, but also Stephen MacArthur, Baz Kaufman, and Andy Math, of course Andy Matthews and Marty Reed and Lloyd and his team. You know, I, I'm really proud of where we've got to. I think it's amazing that under the circumstances we had such good engagement, and I've personally sat through a few annual plans and never had so much obvious support for the direction that we've taken. I think, you know, that 68% of people who either supported it, strongly supported it or somewhat supported our proposals is quite amazing when we think about it. The other thing I think it showed us all through lockdown was how important what the council actually does. You know, when you're stuck in your home and looking at your local suburb, and you suddenly look with fresh eyes and see that you've got parks and you've got clean streets and streets lighting that works, and basically water that is clean and sewage that basically gets taken away. I know we've had a few ups and downs, and I don't know what analogy we should use, but there's been a few things that haven't quite sloshed where they should have sloshed, or is, but, you know, that in the scheme of things is something we're on top of and can manage, I believe, and maybe need to put a bit more funding in. But the big parts of our city actually worked extraordinarily well, and I did note that people came to the table and quite a few people said, we actually wouldn't mind spending more on our rates because we understand the value we're getting, but that's not everybody's position. So I think our landing on about 5, 5.1% is about the right figure, and it has taken some compromises and some hard debates, and we are where we are. I think we can send this out with confidence, you know, it's, we're in, I think, I agree with the people that said, we're actually in a fortunate position, our balance sheet is strong, balance sheet is strong. And a lot of cities are not in that position at the minute, and it's a really difficult position. We've been able to borrow to cover some of our operating expenses and keep our services going, and to still do some nice-to-haves and some of our, you know, carry on with some of our projects. We need to make sure that we're financially prudent, so we do stay with the ability to be a bit flexible and to stretch if we have that earthquake that councillor Pannett talks about, or if we need to spend a bit more on our water unexpectedly, or something happens. You know, but I think this plan is prudent, I think we've got challenges ahead, but they're not unmanageable. So once again, thank you to everybody, thanks to colleagues who've all contributed today, and, and over the last few weeks. A lot of work's gone on behind the scenes with us as well, not just with the staff. So with that, I'm going to actually finish and allow the mayor to have his final right reply, and then we'll put the whole matter to the vote.
Thank you, deputy mayor, and look, thanks colleagues for all your input into not only the debate today, but on, and getting us to this point. And, you know, there's been, obviously been some give and take in getting us to where we are. There's a few things that I wanted to pick up on that various people who spoke to the substantive, and thank you for those of you who spoke to the substantive. It's actually great that we actually get to that point of actually talking about the whole rather than the, the bits of the icing on the top. So councillor Foon, you mentioned Wellingtonians wanting higher rates, the higher rates amount, and I think that was a reflection of the 5.1% versus the 2.3%. And I think that what that reflects is that however people thought about it, that people wanted us to invest in that core infrastructure. They recognise the challenges that we've got in our water system, which were, you know, front and centre before we got into the COVID environment, they were, they were the thing that the media went to in terms of what was going on in Wellington City, they were, in terms of the, the services we deliver. And so people said, we want you to fix that. So we're working towards doing exactly that, and of course we have invested extra money in condition assessment and in raven crews, and of course we're also going through the task force to work out what we need to do on a longer-term basis. And of course during the, during the lockdown, we also had the, you know, our friends from Germany and the UK come in to help us fix the Mount Albert pipe, and we also made the decision to get on with Omorro. So we are getting on with the job in the three waters. And of course Willis Street got finished as well, and, and so did Moa Point, so, you know, some really good work done in that space, and thanks particularly to councillor Rush for his work there. Councillor Pannett, just in terms of insurance, the issue there in insurance is not merely cost, it's availability. And what's quite clear, the clear advice that we have from Andy Matthews is that we actually can't access that insurance, and that we will pay an absolutely astronomical sum were we to try, even to try to do that. So I, I think it's, it's probably vain hoping that that, that money is there. I think if you were an insurer, some of them are obviously decided that maybe they dial back a little bit in what they're willing to, to put up. And so we are going to have to go through the self-insurance regime to a greater degree, and I think that's going to be something for New Zealand as a whole. And I think that's the kind of thing that the task force, the insurance task force from the end of last training, which is still sitting with the Treasury and with the minister, in fact is something which we did have brought up to us by the property council as submitters, saying, hey, where's that got to? So it's something which I'm actually going to have a conversation with the minister in the very near future. But it's, the, the reality is it's both expensive and not available. You also said we should congratulate ourselves that we're not Auckland, and look, I did, did have a quick look at what Auckland has done. Now Auckland, of course, has got themselves right to the limit of what they're able to borrow, and they've got some massive costs also in the water space in terms of, in terms of the managing water supply. So Auckland reduced service levels, reduced opening hours, reduced maintenance levels, most CapEx, including renewals, will be delayed, fewer programmes, grants and events, public transport services being reduced, deferrals of safety investments, particularly in the road safety area, support of vulnerable groups reduced, impact on jobs and employment, I think I saw the number of 1,000 people, and a lot of them in the contractor or part-time area, and a reduced response to climate change. So that was a, that was, you know, that's a, that's a massive impact, taking all those things together. So, yes. You also mentioned interestingly that the flying overseas not needed. Yeah, well, that, obviously we're not going to be doing a heck of a lot of that in the near future, but I would point out that it was a, Mr Matthews going overseas on a regular basis that actually helped us get the insurance that you said we should get, and in terms of maintaining the relationships with the insurance industry. So sometimes people do have to go and do some of these things, and doing it by Zoom probably wasn't going to work. You also mentioned fee increases being a problem, and we, of course, we didn't include several fee increases, which we were planning on including this to, this, this annual plan. The biggest of those, well, the front and centre one for me was the building consents area. So government, through Kangaora, of course, went, went around trying to take both our staff and Auckland City staff in particular, who we just spent a lot of money training, and so we actually had to pay more to keep those staff. And what we're doing at the moment is we are not putting that on the people applying for building consent, we're taking it on the rates. That's not sustainable, and we clearly need to look in that area. The other bit, of course, is the building consent at the moment, people often think is an area where council makes money, we don't, we lose a fortune, and there is a massive risk involved in the building consent area. So that will have to be addressed in the long-term plan. And both you and, well, actually several people mentioned the green infrastructure, and particularly wanted to, so thank councillor O'Neill for the, bringing the $200,000 into the weeds management. Of course, that was one of the things I asked you all about at the beginning of the training, would you support more money for weed management, because we didn't do the, we're not doing the job well enough. And of course now as part of the government's budget, we have the Jobs for Nature, and we've put our hands up saying we want to be part of that, and dropping our extra money for weed management would have been a terrible signal to send to the government, to send to the Department of Conservation, to send to the Ministry of Environment. So I'm hoping that there will be a place for Wellingtonians who've lost their jobs to be able to be creatively, constructively employed in helping the ongoing restoration of our natural environment. So it is an economic thing there too, councillor Calvert. And I think that is probably all that I needed to respond to, except for just to, to reiterate the thanks to staff, councillor Day, thank you for your kind comments, and around the webinars, I thought they were great. Amy, I think of all the people who's in the room, thank you particularly to, to you, and if you could pass on our thanks to Esther in particular, for the great job done. I think it was a, a great experience for all of us, and it's a tool that I'm sure that we will, we will continue to use, and I know it's going to be included in the Planning for Growth. So that's all I think I needed to say, other than to acknowledge our, our staff generally. So Barbara, thank you to you and all your team, to demo services who've helped us through all this process, to all the management team, and Baz, you and your team, Lloyd. And can I just especially thank, because I know, because it's your last forum meeting, Andy at the back, just to thank you for all your work over so many years, and to, I know we'll get to wish you well later on, but in this, in this environment, to say thanks to you, Marty, thanks to you as well for all the, the great work you've done. And, sorry? Oh, I was thanking David, I said to thank the whole management team there too, so thank you David too. Absolutely. Sorry David, I wasn't leaving out, but it was just purely, I was focusing on the finance bit there in the annual plan, but no, David, thank you, and we'll, we'll look forward to saying thanks more properly later on.
Yep, yep. I know, we know there's been lots of late nights weekends, so, yep. For everyone. Now look, what I'm suggesting is we just roll, scroll through the final, it's Donna, who also needs some acknowledgement, she's been sterling job today, but she's incorporated those amendments from Jenny, amendments from Jill, and amendments from Laurie. Then, we, okay, so just in summary, we, we have managed to bring the decision that was made around Jenny's amendments means we are now only including $7.328 million of rates-funded cost pressures, so that's been reduced from 7.658. So there's been a small reduction in the rates-funded cost pressures due to that decision, and it's fairly clear the other two decisions are just being incorporated into the wording of the document. Are people comfortable to take that on trust, or would we like to scroll through it to see? Okay, I've got, okay, you would like 8A taken separately, so what we probably need to see now is the actual recommendations, if we can, how hard is that? So 8A was, can you just remind us the content of 8A? Oh, right, right, it is now for me, it wasn't before. Okay, so we will take that first, and then we will vote for the remainder. So we will now vote on 8A in the normal way, so.
Sorry Sarah, can someone read on 8A?
Ah, yep, yep, okay, right. So Jenny, sorry councillor Conde, 8A says, we agree the following variations to the 2021 annual plan budget, and 8A is the additional cost pressures. So it's now an inclusion of 7.328 million of rates-funded cost pressures, rather than the previous figure, which was 7.658. So it's been reduced basically by the amount of money as per the amendments that you brought to the table. And part B also says, note that this includes the Corrie Events Centre, council-funded operating costs of 98K. The second part of that, which was the appearance industry bylaw, is now struck out. Because you might want to vote against that as well. So, I'm flurrying. I'm sorry Jenny, that we can't actually get this clearer for you. What are you wanting taken separately? So you're happy just for 8A separately? Okay, that's what we're doing now is 8A, which is the noting the additional cost pressures have now been reduced. Okay, and now we'll take the rest of the recommendations as a single vote, then vote now. When, when we vote, yes, we're including everything else. And I'm, okay, and I'm pleased to announce that, that, that has actually been carried unanimously, which is, oh yes, well done. And with that, I invite us all to stand for the closing karakia, I think that brings us to the end of our business. Yep, on the screen, right. So, bunahe, 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 kiapenui, kiawatia, kiamaa, kiannaka, tatinana, tiaarua, itiara, takatu, koeira, irongo, kaaria, akei ikunga, kiawatia, kiawatia, aironga, kuaatia. And thank you very much, I declare the meeting closed at whatever time it is.